We have the list of interviews in the jungle. Yeah, I have the sheets.
This will hold for you.
No, I have flash sets in over there next to me.
Right, so this is tax, property taxes.
Yeah, property taxes.
Paper, right.
And water.
I don't see how one does.
Well, I guess the water, you know.
And welcome to the Select Board meeting of June 3rd. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the announcements I have for this evening is the girls lacrosse team won the sportsmanship award at the Bowers Lacrosse Tournament. Congratulations. The paving schedule we have up this upcoming week is Monday, Merryweather should be paved, weather permitting. Tuesday and Wednesday, we're aiming to pave Williams Street, so please try to avoid that area. And depending on the weather, the latter part of that week, Thursday or Friday, will be primrose. Any questions or concerns, be sure to contact the Town Manager, Stephen Crane. Are there any resident comments before we begin? It's a busy night because we have 14 interviews for the committees and boards. How about Select Board comments?
There is a Select Board comment.
Oh, you.
About what you just mentioned or other issues?
Anything, anything is fine. If you do have a comment, please come up to the table here so you'll be mic'd and on air. Thank you.
My name is Ed Stambowski. I live on 235 Redfern Drive. And maybe unbeknownst to many of you, a not-for-profit agency bought a house at 222 Redfern Drive. Now, what really got me involved with this is the fact they took the garage, they closed it up, they made more rooms, and they put another door on the front. So there's three front doors now on the property. So I checked into the organization, and I called them, I spoke to them. And I said, "What is your intention?" You know, just being a neighbor. She said, "What they're gonna, who they're gonna put there, what they're gonna put there? Four men, grown men with brain injuries." And they will be, there'll be people there 24/7. I said, "Okay." And down the road, "How long does this program last?" She said, "It could last a year, it could last longer, it could be shorter." And then, "Could you bring in anybody else that you wanted besides brain injury individuals?" She said, "Yes." So I said, "You know what? I've got some concerns about this. My biggest concern is the effect it's gonna have on my property value." And I met with Stephen Crane yesterday. And I know he went to Enfield because he was concerned about the apartment complex that was being built that abuts Long Meadow, and he was concerned about the property values. I'm concerned about the property values on my street. I don't know who else is here from Redfern Drive or not. But we should all be concerned about it. Because again, when this house is done, it doesn't look like any other house on the street. It doesn't look like your typical residence. I asked these people, "Do you have other homes in Long Meadow?" She said, "Yes, one's on Converse," and she wouldn't tell me where the other one is. Sunday, I spent the day, an hour or so, driving up and down Converse to see if I could notice a house that stuck out. And I didn't notice any house that stuck out, other than one that had a ramp on it for a disabled individual, I'm assuming. But the rest of the homes looked like they fit into the neighborhood. This one does not. And I said, "You're gonna destroy my property value." And she said, "We're good neighbors, we keep up the property inside and out, and we won't destroy your property values." I said, "If I put a 'For Sale' sign up on my house, and somebody comes into my house and looks at it, and then they walk around the outside and say, 'What is that house over there?'" She said, "Well, you don't have to say anything." And to me, that's something I'm about. I would tell them what it is, and they're gonna turn around and walk away from buying my house. So when they say there's no impact, and Steve tried to convince me that there's no proven impact at this point, and I told him I was gonna hire somebody who's familiar with the housing situations like that, and ask them to give me a report of what they think the value of my property, how much the value of my property will decrease, if any. So I'm awaiting that report. That's my biggest concern, is the fact that it's gonna impact my property value, and it's gonna impact the property values of my neighbors as well. And, you know, you don't have any proof to tell me that it's not going to. You have theory. And theory doesn't work for me. I mean, so, I'm upset about it. And if you're gonna allow this to continue to happen, whether it's apartment complex in Enfield, which I know you can't do anything about, but it's gonna, you know, erode, potentially erode, I don't know if there's any facts that support that either, but, you know, Mr. Crane was telling me that it's gonna impact the property values. He may have fact on that, I don't know. I didn't, you know, I forgot to ask that question. But little by little, things are gonna change, and property values are gonna erode, and it's starting on the outside of the town, and it's gonna eventually make its way to the inside. Now, I remember 10, 15 years ago, there was an individual in town who wanted to locate low-income housing into Long Meadow. And I knew who the individual, and I knew what his plans were, and it never happened. And I can't imagine why it didn't happen, but I could probably throw some theories out as to why it didn't happen. Because again, you're trying to protect the values of Long Meadow. You know what? I want my property value protected as well. And I'm sure some of the other people here who live on Redfern want the same thing. And to boot, last night, 11:30 at night, they're banging away on the inside of the house. And I'm laying in bed, and I'm listening to this noise, and it's reverberating throughout the neighborhood. And I said, "In 10 minutes, I'm gonna get up, and I'm gonna walk over there and tell them to shut it down." And in 10 minutes, I got up out of bed, I got dressed, and I walked out to my front door, and the cops pulled up to that house and told them to shut it down. So obviously, it just didn't bother me, it bothered other people. I spoke to the contractor this morning, I spoke to Service Net this morning again, as well, and I told them, "Don't make sure it doesn't happen again." Because it's a quiet, peaceful neighborhood, and we don't need somebody banging a hammer at 11:30, quarter of 12 at night.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else who also wanted to speak? Could you state your name and your?
Absolutely. My name is Charles Gamache at 178 Redfern.
And just a minute, do you need a spelling on these names?
Absolutely. G-A-M, as in Mary, A-C-H-E.
Thank you.
No problem. I'm three houses down from the house in question that's been sold. And I think one of the concerns that we have too is we don't know what recourse we have, if any, to solve this problem. You know, they're doing the construction, to me, it seems like it's a done deal. And I think we're all questioning how that can happen without at least notifying the neighbors that a facility of this type is going in. Even if it's just the next-door neighbors, and not necessarily houses that are three houses down. So, you know, a question that I have, if anybody can answer it, is how do we research these types of things? How can we get the answers to some of these questions on how this can happen and what we can do about it? And I don't know if anybody has those answers for us, in terms of what we can do.
Usually, what we do is resident comments, we hear what your concerns are, and then we have to go back and look at it.
Okay, great. So would there be follow-up then afterwards that we can come back to, or?
Or we try to contact you.
Okay, great. All right. That's good enough for me then. Thank you.
And your address again?
Yep, 178 Redfern.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did someone else want to speak in regards to this?
Larry Goldberg, 159 Redfern Drive. Somebody else had already said this is gonna be like a tax-exempt-type situation, so is that gonna affect the taxes for income for the town, as well as our values and our taxes?
Again, we'll have to look into any questions that you have.
And how long will that take? Will they already be living there by the time we get an answer back?
Oh, no. Usually by the next meeting, which is usually in two weeks. It could be earlier. But I'm not sure when, what they're doing, and how fast they're constructing. But this is something we'd have to look into and get back to.
They start at like 6:00 AM, and they go to, like he said, at least 11 o'clock at night, and they do it every night. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other resident comments on this issue, or any other issues? No?
I'd also like to mention the fact that, to me, this is a business. I pull the 990, which is their annual filing for tax purposes. They generate $1.5 million per year, not from grants, not from donations, but from third-party billings for these type of situations. This is a commercial operation, it's no different than a nursing home. You should move it down the street where the nursing home is.
Thank you very much. All right, any other comments about Select Board comments?
I have some, but Marie, with the amount that you've got going on, I'll just wait to the end, figure if we can't do it.
Okay.
My only comment, Marie, is that, you know, at the last meeting, I was hoping that we would, we talked about having a review of the Janice's house generator. I don't know if that's gonna come up in Town Manager's comments. And also, Mr. Foster was gonna help us out a little bit and talk more about the Williams Middle School boilers, which was a follow-up, and that didn't make it on the agenda either. Also, I think it's important to find a follow-up on a dog hearing that we had here six weeks ago, I think, that we made some directives that have not been followed through, in my understanding. And I think we ought to consider implementing our next steps. I'd like to add those items to the agenda later on.
Okay. Any other comments? Paul?
Yep. First, I want to address the Redfern issue. I spoke with the building inspector after I got a call from a resident, and I was told there was nothing that we could do. It's exempt from zoning, there's no need for public hearings. And I go down Redfern quite a bit during the week, my office is near there, and, you know, it's funny, because just before that, to your folks on Redfern, I was saying, "What a great little street, it's, you know, nice ranch houses, it looks like, you know, raised ranches, whatever. Seems like a nice place, houses, some houses on a little bit of a hill." It's definitely gonna affect the neighborhood, one way or the other. I'm more concerned, and what I really like us to follow up on is, and this was known by the building inspector more than a few weeks ago, but in a sense of when the permit came through, but I'd really like to know what the alternatives are if it's not someone with a brain injury, for example. Are there alternatives, alternative patients that can be brought in that don't necessarily have to have a brain trauma, but have some other affliction or addiction and so forth? And once it's opened, who monitors it to see whether or not they're actually following through with what they're going to do? I think those are some of the things that we need to follow up on for the neighbors. Because it is, the house does look out of place with the garage being converted into a bedroom, and it will affect the neighborhood in some way, shape, or form. I don't know how we measure it, but it's gonna have some effect. And I think that everybody on the board would be concerned if it was happening in their street. And I think that's how we should be acting for these folks as well, to find out the answers to that, especially the questions of can they vary from the patients that they're gonna handle? Also, I think that we should know as a board is, is it a tax-exempt property? Just to know that. Because as Paul, Mr. Stambowski mentioned, Paul Healy said there's now three in town that the same company owns. And my question is, is there more than just those three from the same company? Are there other companies operating ventures like that that we're not aware of, that those properties come off the tax rolls here and there as well? My other comments are a couple of things. There was a mention during the budget meeting, at one of the budget meetings, and it was in pass, and I was looking over some notes, and the Town Manager mentioned that we are purchasing two police cars this year because we're gonna use the money that was allocated for police cars next year for something else. This board voted last year, and something to that effect. You said we're buying two police cars this year?
One out of FY14 funds, and one is budgeted for FY15.
Okay, so it's one car for?
Fifteen.
But we're buying them now?
One car out of FY14 is gonna be ordered before the end of the fiscal year, and then there's another car budgeted for fiscal year 15.
Okay. I thought you said two cars, one car. The board voted to purchase zero cars. That was a vote of the budget, in the budget, and that money, zero cars were gonna be purchased, with the exception of there was one that was taken off the road in a major accident or something that couldn't be replaced. I'd like to know, I'd just like to know why, it doesn't have to be tonight, if we can find out why we're purchasing one when the board voted to allocate $0 to purchase vehicles this year.
In 14.
In 14, with $14 for 14. Because as we found out, the police department had 12 vehicles, when we were told for years there were seven or eight. The other thing that, I was at the Council on Agent meeting a couple of weeks ago. The director spoke about the vote at Town Meeting for the new, for the study for the Council on Agent building. And that was the first time that I heard that the director actually supported that. And I'd like to know if we can get some information from the Town Manager, that the director of the Council on Agents said she supported that vote at Town Meeting, that she's happy that it went through. Marie was at the meet with me as well. But I'd like to know why we didn't hear that beforehand. Because I think, you know, we were asked to adopt that article from a citizen's petition to a Select Board petition agenda, or Town Meeting warrant article. And I'd just like to find out why, where the change came from, the Council on Agent Director not speaking to either Town Manager or the Select Board, saying that that article should be passed, and we should have known why she believed so, maybe some of those deficiencies that were mentioned are not really kind of generic. And the other question I have is not more of a question, it's more of a point of order and a fact that I think the Town Manager needs to be made aware of, is I think the Council on Agent Board is under the impression that they're gonna be able to write the RFP for the study. And I don't think that's how it is going to work, is it? And if not, you don't have to answer, but I think there's some concern or plans for that to be written, and it's already decided who's gonna write it, and where the bid is gonna go to, and so forth. And I'm just making you aware of that, just so you know.
I am aware of that, and we've been working with Town Council to, on an opinion, to clarify what the role of the COA Board is, and, I mean, any folks here, the funds that they have are town funds. And so, the, I mean, they don't have the ability to sign a contract and encumber funds or anything like that, so we'll work that out.
But the only thing I want to mention with that is that the warrant article did not say the Council on Agent for the town to support, it said the town. And I'm assuming when by the town, that means the Town Manager's office, Select Board side of the government type of thing.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
In the warrant article, it did not say for the town to allocate $35,000 to the Council on Agent, it was for the building, the study of the building. And when it says the town to allocate money, it's through the Town Manager, Select Board Office, that side of town government, not a particular department. Okay.
Complex, or house, or whatever it is, on Redfern. This is the first, I've heard of it.
Yeah, and the way you were describing it, it sounds like it's a rooming house of some sort. And my understanding was that rooming houses are not permitted under our zoning laws. And it sounds like, Paul, you spoke to the building inspector, and he was under the impression that it was exempt from our zoning laws. I'd like to get an opinion from our Town Council on that point. I mean, this is, I think this is a pretty important point, especially if this company has other locations, if it's planning on expanding, whether it's gonna go beyond its current patients. It sounds like, you know, this plan to have people with brain injuries, that could, they could follow that, they could not follow it, we're having nothing to say about it. And, I don't know, this kind of strikes me as odd. And I really wanna look at the law to see if they in fact are exempt from all of these requirements that we impose on everybody else. And I think it's kind of thin gruel to offer to town residents that, you know, an opinion that their property value may not go down. I don't think, you know, it may or may not, but the point is, it's a concern, one way or the other, in that we should be holding fast to the rules.
I can answer the questions right now, or do you wanna wait till another time?
I mean, have you checked it?
Yeah, I've checked on it.
Have you spoken to Town Council?
No, but I have a citation from the building commissioner.
Well, all right, but rather than you play lawyer, I'd like to talk to our lawyer.
I would prefer us to.
Thorough answers, rather than just come up with a short answer to you. So we will, all of the questions you've asked, we will be getting together, put it together something, and get back to you on it in a timely manner. If you have a resident comment, we'll have to finish Select Board comments, because we, it's not a back and forth. It usually is just the residents make the comments, then we get the information, and then we, so it's not really an open discussion right now. Any further comments, if you could send it to us in writing? Richard, I know you've been, you held off.
I'll wait to the end.
You still await to the end?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna need a couple of minutes.
So we'll have Select Board comments at the end also. But a thorough discussion on this will have to be at the next meeting, where I will put it on the agenda. Our schedule is in two, every two weeks, so it'll be Monday.
Who do I send these to, if I have a comment?
The Select Board or myself, and then I send it out to the whole Select Board.
All of our email addresses and including Town Managers is on the website. So if you're longmeadow.org.
But if you missed your chance for a resident comment, you'd like to make a comment, but it won't be a back and forth, it would just be your statement. Yeah, go ahead. Since we seem to have gone out of order here, we'll let you have a chance.
I just wanted to interject, when I went on the website, it's not only for brain injuries. I have, the people that live next door have young children, and she's very concerned because they could bring in people that have been in jail, can, have had drugs, have, and she said, "I moved to Long Meadow and pay a lot of taxes so that I want my children to be safe." So they can at any time change the home from somebody that is in a wheelchair with brain injuries to kids that have been in jail with drugs, and that is a huge concern, living next door to something like that. So I just wanna interject that because it doesn't feel like a safe neighborhood. And I don't have young children, but I feel for them, because they just put a lot of money into the home, and they do not feel safe.
Could you state your name?
Janice Stambowski.
Do you need a spelling on that?
Yes, I can.
And the address?
235 Redfern Drive.
Okay. Thank you very much. And any further comments? Seriously, you could send us all an email, and it will go into consideration in the correspondence. Thank you. Oh, thank you. I'll have this sent out to everybody. We're gonna go straight to the interviews, and the way I wanna do it is by group. And the first is the Audit Committee, and there's only one audit person, so you could come up and state your name and what position you are interviewing for.
I'm Glenn Rosenberg. I'm interviewing for the Audit Committee, presently Vice Chair of the Committee. I've been on the committee for eight years. I enjoy the work and would like to continue.
Thank you. And which, are you going for the two, one-year associate, or two, or the three-year?
Three-year.
Three-year, please. Okay, good, thank you. Any questions? No?
I have one.
Yes?
Glenn, we've had some conversations about like a charter review and so forth, and with the, with the limited number of people that are, or some vacancies, I should say, on some key committees in towns, there's been some discussion about perhaps combining a committee, maybe, and I'm using the words audit and capital plan and so forth. With the role that audit does, could you see your committee being combined with another one and taking on other roles, or do you feel that it's really just needs to be the Audit Committee? Because you guys are doing it every day, that's what.
I think it's certainly worth considering and giving some thought to it. Because I do know that the Finance Committee has had vacancies, the Audit Committee has certainly had vacancies over the years, and it's certainly a matter worth discussing and thinking about and analyzing.
Any other questions?
We had the, our auditor come in last summer, I think it was last summer, we talked about full PEP liability and that sort of thing. How big of a concern it is from your perspective, when you've been?
I think it's a major concern. I think it involves a big liability, and it's something that we have to be mindful of, and whatever we can do to work towards that.
Any other questions? I want to thank you very much. The Audit Committee is a very important committee here in town, and I know a lot of towns don't have it, and I was very impressed with the report that you produced this year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the procedure is, the next meeting is when we vote to place people on committees. So thank you.
Okay, thanks again.
On Board of Assessors, is Michael Zeller here? Thank you. Would you, so I'll state, Michael Zeller.
Michael Zeller.
You're looking for the one, three-year term, which is expiring this end of June.
Correct.
So you want to tell us a little bit, you're an incumbent?
Okay, well, I want to thank the Board for allowing me to volunteer, and I've taken a lot of pride in what we've done, accomplishments, and, you know, contributing back to the community. I think that we are an oversight, obviously, to the assessor, and I think we've done a wonderful job. And I have a great team, I mean, the Board members that we have are well-qualified, and we continue our education in that process to keep learning about the assessment process.
Thank you. Any questions? Mark?
So, how do we address the issue that seems to come before us every year, which is the discrepancy in valuations of properties, that some are going up and some are going down? More importantly, what actions do the, can, or is the Board of Assessors willing to take to try to, try to address those issues?
Well, when we come, when issues come to the Board for assessment, we try and objectively look at each one, and there is basically regulations and procedure that the Department of Revenue tells us how to do that. And so, part of our education system is to learn those things, which we've done, and we still continue to learn. But there will always be differences based on the fact that some houses are dormered, some houses are based good condition or fair condition, or good, you know, there are a lot of variables that are involved in a lot of that decision-making.
Thank you. Kind of another question is, you know, one of the areas that concerns me is the number of appeals that we get to our assessments. Obviously, that was one of the questions I just had. But would you consider yourself to be a, I guess, a better question, how would you consider yourself relative to appeals, relative to favoring the town, favoring the residents, favoring the state?
I do not have, you know, we're not, we're here to try and be fair, and our oversight is to make sure that the assessor has done what we perceive as a fair job. And we do question him, so we're an oversight. We don't, we're not here to be a bully pulpit for one or the other, we're here to just make sure that everybody is judged fairly. I mean, I hope I answered your question.
Any other questions?
I have two. One thing that seems to, I mean, to come up, I mean, residents, when I say residents, I'm talking about some, but there's, but it's more than just a few, have a concern that the
Have a concern that the way that we assess the value of commercial property versus residential property, that it's, that commercial properties sort of consistently comes in low, the methodologies don't quite seem to make sense. I remember we were discussing this at another meeting, but I was wondering if you could, I mean, are you aware of this controversy and sort of?
Were you talking about the split rate, or are you referring to?
No, I'm talking, well, we, I understand the split rate, that, but that's, the split rate comes up once you've decided what the value is.
Right.
What I'm talking about is deciding what the value is.
Well, again, these are, you know, there's an income approach that goes on with commercial property, which is not part of residential. So those are factors that come into play besides just the value, you know, the land values and so forth. So in reference to differences, again, we, there's information from the Department of Revenue that gives us a, I'm trying to use the right word, but it gives us a level of, where we should be. I'm trying to come up with the right word, but there, there is readouts that we do look at in reference to that and what their values can be. I know I'm being convoluted here. I would say that you're, you're, you're looking at, commercial is rated differently than residential for the simple reason that the income has something to do with what their values will be, in reference to rentals, for instance.
Right, right. I mean, I guess, you know, a couple of people have emailed me and given some fairly stark examples about how commercial property of a similar size versus residential property of a similar size, there's quite a disparity. And, and when I've seen these examples, I'm kind of left shaking my head. And, and again, I'm sure you've had, I'm sure you've had these discussions with people, and I guess I just wanted to kind of.
You know, I'd have to have an example of what you're referring to.
Right, right.
For me to really make comment on something like that. But again, there is a process that if we don't, that if there's something that seems to be unfair, there is that process for abatement.
Okay. I guess one, my question is, are you aware of, generally of, concerns about how commercial property and residential property is valued?
Again, we're ruled by, by the Department of Revenue that, that gives us the, the terms of how we rate these things. It's not as simple as, okay, the house is rated based on its comparative sales, whereas commercial is compared to possibly the circumference of, of an area outside of Long Meadow, in reference to rental.
Okay. I don't know, I guess, I mean, I guess, we're not gonna get very far down this road. The chair isn't liking this, so.
I was going to say, you can send, you can continue the conversation by sending them emails or even going to the assessors meeting.
I'm sorry, I just, I figured this was the one opportunity every three years that we could.
Oh, no.
No, you can talk to me anytime.
I know, but, but this is sort of an important point to do this.
This is a time to see how they.
Just in reference to, you know, you talk about abatements and things like that, we are very strong, we're in reference to, we're not getting over, the appeals court is not overstepping our bounds. We are still holding our, I would say that maybe, and I'm referring to not just commercial but residential, maybe ninety-five percent, or rather, five percent might go to, let me go back.
Well, that's it, because the purpose of the question is really to see about you being on the board, but any in-depth questioning about how we're assessing, you probably would want to put it on the agenda, so you could come prepared for our questions. Paul?
Yeah, I'm gonna, when you guys come back, I'll hit you guys on the split tax rate at that point. I think what, Alex, to answer your question, I think anybody, when I first got on the board, I sat down with Bob Cleer for about an hour and had no clear understanding of how they, and that's my fault, but I'm just saying, it is, there are so many things into, what Mr. Zeller was saying is that they're guided by law, state law, and every piece of property is different, even though it doesn't make sense, and I haven't met one person in town who felt they were undervalued ever. So I would say that, you know, I don't think, Mr. Zeller's the, and I agree, this might not be the right format, but I would suggest if, we should have more conversations with assessors because I think it's one of the sorest points of people who live in the community, who don't understand maybe why an assessment went up on their property and one went down on their neighbors. But I think we, the more we can educate the public with that, with the assessors here, that would be a better argument, and I, and you guys are doing, they're definitely meeting on a lot more regular basis than what we've had in the past, and you guys are doing a good job.
Well, that was ancient history, that was something that happened three years ago. We had a dorm member who just couldn't show up almost.
Yep. You guys are doing much better.
Any further questions for Mr. Zeller? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Board of Health. We have one person interviewing tonight, and Dr. Rappaport will be interviewing on June sixteenth, and this is for a three-year term. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Pat Toye, forty-five Williamsburg Drive. I'm applying for the position on the Board of Health. I currently sit on the Board of Health. I've been a town resident for almost thirty years. I raised my three children. They went to school here. I'm a registered nurse. At Bay State Medical Center, I work full-time. My background is infectious diseases, adult and pediatric, maternal-child nursing, community nursing, and public health. I think I bring some diversity to the board. It's currently all physicians and a dentist, and they're all male. I am female, and I have a nursing background and nursing perspective, also sort of more reality-based, if you will, maybe more holistic. I've learned a lot on the Board of Health from certainly immunizations, water, sewer safety, septic systems. I never knew as much about grease traps and what happens to the food we throw away in this town, but you learn very quickly. I think I bring a perspective of my international nursing experience, traveling around the world, issues with water, hunger, immunizations, infectious diseases there, so that is my platform, and I serve on the Head Start Health Advisory Board for the Springfield Chicopee Head Starts, and I've been on the Pioneer Valley Girl Scouts Advisory Board, and also St. Mary's Gil, and that's my claim to fame.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I have one. What is, what's the hardest issue you guys are dealing with, that you're having, whether it's financial issues to deal, you know, financial resources to deal with it, or what's the biggest issue?
Financial's not a problem. We don't have any money.
Yeah.
We fly under the radar.
We have a director, I mean, there's only so much that she can do.
Yes, I think it's probably the time and energy that, you know, our chief health officer has amazing amount of work and on-site activities that come up at the last minute, be it, like I said, sewer systems, new restaurants, health inspections, even Long Meadow days, checking temperature on foods, all the sporting events. I think if there were more hours to give to her, that would be our biggest challenge financially. But I think we have the benefit of a Board of Health chair and individuals who are ready and available at the last minute to go look at something, at an emergency crisis situation, be it some public health safety issue, and I think that's always a challenge. But we're all volunteers, we all work full-time, but we kind of work locally too, so that advantage that we can be called. We're on the Emergency Command Center list for the state, and when there's a disaster in town, that can be very challenging, but we do our best. We have great volunteers in town that work with us on those kinds of disasters, but I mean, I just think we, we kind of go day-to-day, we never quite know. It would be hard for me, I would say probably unplanned disasters, the tornado that hit town when we're out of power, when we're out of emergency service, elderly in town that need help, families and children that can't get out or don't have food, those are issues we deal with a lot. The schools, sometimes there is a health crisis in the schools. I am called upon a lot to do LICE checks, and there's really no one else in town that wants to do that or can do that, so whatever comes up, it's a day-to-day, interesting situation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Cable advisory, there are three people, or two?
Three.
Three, okay. If you could just pull another chair up, I'd appreciate it. Oh, no, there, just pull. If you could state your name and what position you're looking for, because I believe there's a one, one-year associate, all, all going for the all-three? Okay.
Three of us, Steve Wallman, Norm Michaels, E. Holland Love, and we have all been on the committee for about eighteen years, and I am the chair.
I'd like to add, we have one of the great committees here at Long Meadow. I think this is one of the finest, i.e., look at this.
Yes.
This is from the fees we get from Comcast, and Steve and the committee have been very vigilant working with it. As Richie Neal said many years ago, you're dealing with an unregulated monopoly. We can't deal with fees, programming, engineering. There's an awful lot we can do between that. I, back a while, getting the favored nations deal out of Springfield, where they got a senior rate, we didn't get it here, we got it. We miss very much Bill Monks, who was a great leader, did so much for us, both on the commission and the LCTV, but we've got great replacements and we continue. Right now, we're working very diligently with Comcast to get to high-def. This is not as easy as it seems. We're dealing with a monopoly, these things are difficult, but we have better relations with them, and we hope to continue. The LCTV, you can see it here, with the fees, allows us to do so much more. We're working on more grant fees so that we can do more things, football games, lacrosse, et cetera. So it's been a pleasure to serve on this committee. Look forward to continuing.
It's a state-of-the-art facility that's, you know, been put in here, and it functions beautifully. It's far and beyond what most of the other local communities have, and it's all to, all to serve the residents of the town, and that's what we do generally. Of course, as cable advisory, that sort of limits our direction to dealing with Comcast and the license, and all the issues that continually come up regarding changes in the technology, lawsuits that get filed against Comcast, its impact upon the town at some point in time, so. I've been a member for probably that eighteen years as well. Continue, I enjoy the service, it's something that I've got some background in, and would look forward to being able to serve in this capacity.
Most towns, yes, whatever the cable company wants, go ahead. With Steve and Norm and others, that doesn't happen with us. We've lost some battles, but we've won quite a bit.
One of the things that I do want to point out is, whether you believe it or not, cable television as we know it today is a dead man walking. It is on its way out. Going to any store that sells televisions and what do you see? Wi-Fi apps on every television set being sold, because everything is moving to the internet. That being said, this town does not have a town-wide Wi-Fi internet system set up the way Amherst does. And Amherst does not have it completely through its own town. It has varying degrees of connectivity, the highest being fifty gigabits. Now, that's a huge number, because that's for businesses, yet the residents in that area who can, who can connect, get it for free. What I would like to see, if you, if you look at what's the vision for the future, is that this town should be questioning Amherst, what was in your RFP? What's in your contract? Do you have net neutrality? Do you have data limits? Do you have high-def verified? How does the town make money off of this? None of, I have no idea. All I know is that they have it, but rather than wait until Comcast does whatever it wants, and it wants to put on data limits of either three hundred gigabits or five hundred, and to download a high-def movie today, two hours, at five hundred gigabits, you can download a hundred and twenty-five two-hour movies. But everything is moving to ultra-high-def, the 4K, which takes eight times as much in the way of data to download that same two-hour movie. So you're talking about twelve to fifteen. Now, you may say, how many people are gonna watch twelve to fifteen? But when you start looking at all of the Youtubes and a TV show here and a TV show there, by the time you turn around, they've already used up their data, their data, and that's why Comcast is doing it, because they're trying to keep their customers captive onto the cable. There is a company called Aereo, which is now battling in the Supreme Court to allow it to rebroadcast, the broadcast channels. In some federal courts, it's been approved, in others, in California, it hasn't been, that's why it's in the Supreme Court now. But if they get the go-ahead from the Supreme Court, then Comcast has a problem, because people will be cutting the cord more quickly than they are today. People always said they wanted à la carte programming. By using the Wi-Fi apps, that's exactly what they're getting. They're either signing up with Netflix, or with Amazon Prime, or with Hulu Plus, and downloading what they want, when they want it, they pay ten dollars a month, and they're happy as can be. And with the, either they'll put up their own roof antenna, or this Aereo, or even use Comcast for just a basic broadcast, and they have cut the cord. But I think the town owes it to its residents to go into a broadband Wi-Fi network free. The FCC just the other day announced that they are looking at changing the definition of what broadband is. They're going to either change it to ten gigabits or twenty-five. Well, if it's twenty-five, the lowest that Comcast has now is twenty to twenty-five, so if they want to call it broadband, they're gonna have to raise it to thirty to thirty-five. The point is, we should be in the forefront, not, we should not be the tail, we should be the tail wagging the dog, not the other way around.
Thank you very much. I think your, all of your discussion proves how important your committee is. Your knowledge has really pulled this town along, and you're even looking to the future, and we really appreciate the work that you put in over the years. There, Mark, I knew you had a question.
I have a couple.
Or a comment.
No, a couple of questions. I noted by your applications that all three of you also serve on the Board of Directors of LCTV, is that correct?
Yes.
And the funds for LCTV come from cable subscribers?
Yes.
I mean, because your committee, among others, was, were negotiating, or were partners to the negotiation with Comcast, is, do any of you see that as any kind of a conflict that you're negotiating with Comcast on behalf of a private 501(c)(3) that will be paid for out of the subscribers' fees?
The only, the only response to that is, the 501(c)(3), LCTV, the station, if you will, is the way that the content gets generated. I mean, I don't, I personally don't see it as a conflict of interest. It's just, you know, without one, you, there's no sense in having the other, you really need both of them.
And when we negotiate a franchise agreement, thirty-six months prior to the expiration of the agreement, a letter arrives at the town hall from the cable company exercising their right to what's called the formal process. At that point, what's called ascertainment begins, and at that point, I contact the town manager and say, "Send out an email to every department and every committee telling us what you think Comcast can provide to you." We get one response, and that was from LCTV. So we represented their interests, but we also represented every other committees and boards' interests when they asked. And even when it comes in, in the middle of a franchise, there have been times when I've gotten emails from, from, I got it from the DPW ones and from the senior center ones, that they needed outlets changed, and I just called up, and it was done gratis, because, you know, they tried, Comcast did try to be a good neighbor when they can. But remember, they represent Mr. Roberts in Philadelphia, they don't represent us. And if you look at what's going on, Comcast is now going to take over all of the Western Mass franchises of Charter Communications if the merger between Comcast and Time Warner Cable takes place. So Comcast is gonna be the megalith going from the tip of Maine down as far south as they can get. And Comcast, and Charter will be on the West Coast, Comcast will be on the East Coast, and you have one company vertically integrated that owns the cables. They own the cable company, so nobody else can be on that cable. They own the internet, so nobody else can be on that internet. The only other thing that can be on there is telephone service because it's voice over internet. So you can have a company like Vonage, or Magic Jack, or anything like that, that can be providing telephone service. But years ago, the turn of the nineteen hundreds, under the Sherman Act, the oil companies, Standard Oil was broken up, even. Even more recently, AT&amp;T, when they owned the long-distance companies, they were forced to divest. And when they did, what happened? They died, because nobody wanted to buy their product. They were bought by SBC, and then AT&amp;T today is Southwestern Bell.
I think you've now shown us we do need this on the agenda. And especially when you talked about the future and wireless, and that is something that this board is actually moving forward and taking the next step. And I think bringing you as part of the conversation will be important in a future agenda. So I'll mention that to the upcoming chair, whoever that is. Paul, you had a question?
When we signed, let me see, there was a smile, the contract with Comcast, I'm almost positive Mr. Gold talked about wireless internet throughout the town.
No, not part of it.
No, but I thought the response from you was that would violate the contract with Comcast.
No, never happened. Never happened.
I know the question was asked.
Not to me.
Maybe it was somebody else on cable advisory.
No, I think maybe if somebody asked about the town having its own cable company.
No, it wasn't cable.
But it wasn't wireless, because first of all, they have a non-exclusive agreement. So that means we can sign another franchise if somebody wants to build, but nobody's going to build. Verizon is not coming here. AT&amp;T sold its system in Connecticut to Frontier Communications. Verizon is getting out of the landline business. They've sold everything in Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont. So Wi-Fi, we can have, just like Amherst has it, we can have it.
Any other questions for their qualifications to be on this board? I did notice, though, we have two positions still open. So we're looking for one-year associates. If anyone would like to volunteer, we'd be accepting applications in the future for that.
One thing I would ask, if you're going to talk about charter revision, I would like to see that associate become an alternate, because if we're short on a quorum, the associate cannot fill that spot. But an alternate could, and that would make the quorum, and the alternate would be allowed to vote. That's a change that I think must be made.
That's very important. Thank you very much.
For all of these committees.
Thank you. That's a very good point. Any other questions for their, thank you very much, and thank you for your expertise and your years of service.
Thank you.
Capital planning. Could you state your name? And I believe you have the spelling on the sheets.
Sure, I'm Tom DiNazio, 24 Crescent Road. I'm a first-time volunteer to lead the committee.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's not true.
Stephen Metz, 171 Cabot, Chalene. Been on the capital planning committee for, I think, six years.
And are you going for the three-year or two-year?
Yes.
Three-year.
The last two years I've been chair of the committee.
And sir, which, are you going for the, one of the three-year terms also?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions? We're very excited. That still leaves two more positions open. So if anyone else would like to volunteer, it's a really important committee, so we appreciate fresh person coming on and assisting. Mark?
Yeah, Tom, I'd like to ask you a little bit about your outlook on the town in terms of capital needs. One of the things the capital planning committee does, gets to do, is review the town, town manager's recommendations with a sense of prioritizing, or reprioritizing, or giving community and citizen input into it. What kind of, what you're thinking on what processes you'd use to do that prioritization?
I'm glad you asked, and the reason I, out of all the openings, the reason I picked capital planning is there's an overlap of work I've done in my work life for Mass Mutual, where I've overseen the project portfolio for Mass Mutual, the annual budget process. I've had budget accountabilities. This included a prioritization process for projects, including, you know, new project submissions, the cost-benefit analysis. I've reviewed CBAs and created them, the juggling that takes place between carryover projects from year-to-year, and the things that have been pended past years, how those are handled. So I have worked through this kind of process. Despite all the processes, sometimes there are things that just kind of overwrite that because they have to happen, emergency needs, something's about to, something's about to break, there's, you know, maybe there's a first responder situation need that sort of skips the line and needs to be handled. So, you know, it's, to me, it's a combination of process and good judgment.
Richard?
Oh. One idea that was, has been kicking around a little bit, is sort of a longer-range planning for our capital needs. I mean, Richard has done a great job of helping to flesh out some of our long-term capital needs, things that, you know, twenty, thirty years. And what I noticed in going through this budget cycle is that we're sort of on this five-year term. How do you guys think, what do you think about sort of taking an even more comprehensive look, you know, to look at the, what's the figure, Richard, two-hundred million, three-hundred million?
Three-year.
Pick whatever. Anything above three-year. Whatever large amount of, you know, because, you know, we were dealing, you know, with, okay, do we get, you know, this backhoe or not, you know, which is sort of, you know, a rounding error. So have you, to the extent you guys have thought about it, I was wondering what you would think about that.
Well, I've had the pleasure of working with both Mr. Gold and Mr. Foster, plus a sort of interim, so have been, have the pleasure of experiencing the transition from the different tenures. And as you know, there was a different town manager a few years ago who had a different idea, and now we're working with Mr. Crane, and with this select board going through this transition. For a while, their focus was on very much, you know, long-term planning was what we're going to do next year, and short-term planning was what we're going to have to launch, so.
Right.
And fortunately, I think, as we've been moving towards, more towards realizing that this town hopefully will be around in the next century, so we need to think about that. We need to look at what we have to take care of now, because as we know, the roads are coming apart. But we need to be planning for what we're going to be doing next year, and ten years from now, and thirty years from now, and keep in mind that we're going to need to address that. At the same time, we need to be taking care of the sidewalks that are coming apart today. So we need to have contingency plans for next year, and have money to take care of the paint job we need to do. We also need to be making plans to have money available thirty years, twenty-five years, and twenty years. But all that has to be put in, put in the hopper to take care of that. So that's going to take the work into the town, the town manager, and the select board, as well as the departments, and we need to have contingency plans moving forward. All of us have to work together to do that. And I think that the, sort of the, we're in a very early stage, is of putting all that together, and it's going to take all of us working together, and I think that Mr. Centinelli, and you guys, Mr. Foster, and Mr. Crane have all been working to do that, and I hope that that process will continue over this next year, as we start putting the flesh on those bones.
And I'll just say that, you know, I agree with everything Mr. Metz has said, and that, if I understand the constraints, the committee, to get from the mode of, you know, addressing only what's breaking and urgent, to, you know, be more thoughtful, probably saving in the long run, would probably require work across committees and boards to do so, and be happy to do so.
Richard?
Yeah. Thank you, Stephen. The, you're right, it's just starting to change. It's in its infancy, I guess, of being recognized, how significant the needs are. The studies are mounting up, and it's, what would you say the number-one challenge for the next two years, right now?
Trying to probably put the Band-Aids on the stuff that we know is falling apart while we're getting all this stuff in motion.
Okay, so you're still in a Band-Aid mode? I would imagine that's...
Well, I drive down Williams Street like everybody else, and my wheels start trying to stay on the car. Actually, I drive it out of Converge Street, and that's where my major trouble is.
Lightning or alarm?
Stephen?
Have you, has your committee taken on the chore, or reviewed the chore, redoing the manual, the planning manual for the capital planning committee?
I'll have to be honest with you, we only have three people on the committee right now, and it's a challenge.
Yeah, okay. So noted.
Mark?
I guess I was just going to ask you how you feel about the concept of the, I just said it in your shorthand, the capital planning committee members taking a healthy skepticism of what's given in front of you, rather than just prioritizing, actually looking to modify or rework, or question the project.
To be honest with you, this, the past year until Mr. Crane actually came on board, we were dealing with an interim town manager whose major job was to try to get through until we got town manager. I'm hoping this year, with knowing who we could really talk to, we can have a better job, do a much better job than we did.
Just like that, I mean, I haven't, no experience with the committee, but I would assume that if there was a recommendation, something like nude lockers needed, that we'd go see them.
Well, yeah, I think the issue last year that came to forefront was air handlers in the school, whether or not they were needed, and how much they were needed, and what, that was one issue that...
Yeah. When we worked together during your tenure, and also with you, Mr. Foster, we would go out and actually look at these things and say, you know, you've got to be kidding.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. And if anyone else is interested in capital planning, please send in an application. It's very important for the committee. Next is community preservation. We have one incumbent, and there's two three-year terms, so anyone is interested in sending an application for that also. Thank you very much for volunteering again.
Beth Green, 34 Ellington Street. I've been on the committee for three years, and I'm eager to continue for another three-year term. I am now the secretary of the committee. I played a leadership role in developing the plan that we are required to have by the state, and put a lot of time and effort into developing the plan. I've also put effort into working to try to ensure that once we have actually approved, and the town meeting has approved any particular grant, that we follow up to make sure that people are spending the money appropriately, that we know that the work is being done, and so forth. So that is a particular interest that I have.
It's wonderful. Thank you. Questions? Richard?
I'm still quite bothered by the fact that projects go into your group and to capital planning at the same time. Does your group spend any time talking about that? Because the one is being sanitized from an engineering aspect over in the capital part, but then they slide over into your group, sometimes they're not even looked at on the other side of the fence until they say, they show up on a warrant.
I know that it's complicated, because we're meeting around the same time, so people are trying to get in their grant applications to both committees simultaneously, and it's sort of a parallel process. So if they waited for one to approve it, they won't know whether or not, if we don't approve it, they then cannot go back to capital. So it makes it very challenging for us as well to say, well, you know. So I think that for us, the key is to make sure we're communicating with capital planning to find out whether or not this is something they're at all committed to, and whether they think we, because this is what's becoming very complicated, is we have very strict limitations on what we can spend the funding on within the legal statute. And so I think what capital planning is trying to make sure, that anything that we could fund within that square, that we would consider. So it's us being in good communication with capital planning about what's appropriate for us, what isn't appropriate for us to fund.
Now, is that communication taking place now? Because it was not when I was on capital planning.
It was not before, but I would say our current chair has been very good about trying to increase communication with all of the various other town committees that are appropriate, including the select board. So I feel our current chair has really put effort into doing as best he can with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mark?
One of the issues that concerns me, that continues to concern me, is despite the, obviously, the authority that the state gives your committee is to use public funds for potentially private organizations, and that's come up. What's your thought on that? And specifically, how do we protect public funds when they are appropriated or recommended for appropriation for private organizations?
We can use it for private nonprofits, and all of your tax dollars are regularly going to private nonprofits, including the one that was being discussed here in the first place on Redfern. That's a private nonprofit, and state funds are what are paying the grant funding for them. So it's a very common occurrence. A lot of nonprofit agencies receive public funding. So this is another mechanism where a nonprofit could receive private, could receive public funding. My goal then is to monitor. We're trying to monitor what the town does with the funding that we have allocated, as well as the private nonprofits, and our job is to monitor to make sure that the funds are being spent appropriately in collaboration with whoever is overseeing the fiscal books in the town.
Thank you. Can I, Maria, not related to your potential appointment, but a question that, well, because this has came up, and it's going to come up anyway. You know, talking about private nonprofits, I recall that we've appropriated funds in the past for the cemetery, and we did rubbings, and we did photographs, and maps, and all that kind of stuff. But this past year, there was appropriation for, actually, a physical thing, a generator for Genesis House. And what never came back to us, which I'm concerned about, is has, does CPA, you know, committee look at, once that goes there, what's the town's ongoing liability? If we're paying, you know, if that breaks down in six months, are they going to call us up and say, come fix your, I mean, is that all protected by the agreement?
I can't imagine that that would be an issue. It would be the same, we put a roof on the Storrs House. We, you know, CPC gave funds for the Storrs House to put a new roof on. I can't imagine that we would be liable. You would have to ask Dave Martel, obviously, but I can't imagine we would have liability. It's now the property of, we paid for them to own the generator. It is now their property. They would be responsible for maintaining it. I can't imagine we would be responsible.
Okay, that was, so that was the understanding of CPA when that grant was made. That's all I'm asking.
Yes.
So just to follow up on that, so it sounds like once the money goes to this nonprofit, that's, we don't have any oversight or control over it. We're trusting that the organization is going to do what it says it's going to do.
No, they don't get any funds until they provide the receipts and the documentation that the money, we approve the money for the roof of the Storrs House, they have to come and say, contractor A put it on the roof, here's what he charges, it was so-and-so many dollars for that. The town doesn't give them the money, it goes directly to that contractor. So they have, they have all of the same thing that the town would do, in terms of, they don't get any reimbursement for anything.
Sure.
Until they've actually done the work. And then we're trying to oversee, so we would be calling them, like, example, again, at the Storrs House, okay, so where are you in the process? How's it going? It looks like you haven't, you've only spent half of the money that we gave you, you got, okay, what's going on with the rest of the money? And we're doing that, and we're actually putting more, as I said, more work as volunteers into trying to ensure that the funds are expended over the time period, and not just lingering and not being spent.
I guess what I was trying to get at a little bit too, was, I mean, a generator, and I'm glad to see that you guys are overseeing the expenditure for the money, but are they maintaining it properly? You know, or, you know, I'm assuming we have no role in that?
No.
So again, we're trusting them at that point.
No. That would not be in our responsibility.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And the same that, you know, if Mike Rabel buys a new boiler for the town, we aren't looking to see whether or not he's maintaining it. It's the exact same thing.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next committee is conservation. Is, oh, two. And conservation, this would be the three-year term?
Yes.
Okay, so we still have three openings on conservation, if anyone's interested. You want to state your name?
David Dumay, 76 Sheffield Ave. And basically, I'm coming up for reappointment. I've been on the commission for three years now, and it's been a rewarding experience. Learned a lot in the last three years, and I'm looking forward to continuing.
Thank you for your service. Any questions?
David, is there, is there any room for the conservation commission to, I guess, use community judgment and decisions that they make?
Would you like to expand on that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. You know, somebody comes to you and says, there's conservation land and we'd like to do such and such, or my house backs up the conservation land and I'd like to do such and such. Is the decision, will we read the book and we get what we get? Or is there a judgment on the part of the conservation commissioners that says, well, we can see how we can make it so that it's favorable to the resident or that it, in other words, is there the ability to use any judgment at all in the decisions that the conservation commission makes?
Definitely have to abide by the state guidelines. And so we get input from the CDC, from, from, you know, from.
Our friends in Boston.
Yeah, from Boston in regard to certain things that come up as far as the applications from these people. So they are coming before us and then obviously, there is some judgment call as far as whether something is, maybe it's an intermittent stream versus more of a regular stream. We don't know if it's that type of thing, but we definitely rely on some of the experts, again, in Boston for some input in that regard too.
Any other questions for him in regards to conservation? Could you stay right there?
Sure, for Tree.
An interview for the Tree Committee?
Yes.
You are looking at also a three-year term for that?
Yep.
Okay, and that means we have available three more spaces. So please consider applying an application. Thank you for going for more than one committee. And did you wanna state anything about your service?
Well, the only thing I would say about that is you mentioned, or there was a question before as far as whether or not anything could be combined as far as committees are concerned. And I think it's something, I'm not sure, I know that there's state laws as far as from the conservation commission. I don't know how that would apply to a Tree Committee quote unquote. But I think it's something that could be, you know, pursued or looked upon a little bit further. Because the Tree Committee, we've kinda had, we've gone different ways as far as trying to determine the status of the town trees and how well they're in shape, whatnot, versus now we're looking at even just as far as maintaining, watering some of the new ones that we're putting in place, even here at the school. Like, there's been discussion how some of them weren't watered and they died and what have you. It's just volunteer type of things that we can do to help preserve, I guess, and maintain the town trees.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Any questions in regards to the Tree Committee?
What role, if any, do you have about trees that residents wanna put on in the tree belt in front of their houses?
So there are bylaws in regard to the tree belts and, and the tree warden, Mike Rabel, has to, when it comes to tree belts, that type of thing, they are supposed to come before him and/or us to, I think, get permit for it. Basically, because obviously if there's overhead wires, they're gonna give recommendations, okay, this might be a better tree for you versus a tall oak, that type of situation. So it, it is definitely something that has been on our radar a little bit more lately too because of obviously, I think, maybe, you know, October storms and things that maybe people wanna do. And I, I think it's important, I think, for the residents of the community to recognize that there are bylaws in regard to doing those type of things.
So how, how active are you, is the Tree Committee in approving or disapproving proposed trees that residents wanna?
In the three years I've been on it, we've never been approached in that regard so far, yeah.
So, so that really isn't part of your, so, so it's really the tree ward?
It's not active, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Council on Aging. We have two members interviewing tonight. And that leaves us two open terms if anyone is interested in applying. Well, state your name and I guess you're both going for the three-year and you're both incumbents.
John Carey, 28 Lawrence Drive. I've been in Long Meadow now for 41 years. I've been on the board of the Council on Aging since 2004 and I'm asking to be given another term.
Thank you.
Bob Petroff, 117 Crescent Road, lifelong resident and been on the board the last three years and looking to renew it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the two gentlemen? Paul?
First of all, thank you for reapplying. I've been at board meetings with you guys. And the question I have is, and I asked this at town meeting with the study that's being done, the petition described the Council on Aging as woefully inadequate, okay? And I'm stepping down as liaison. I'm gonna recommend to board after we organize to have Marie as the liaison because she's there anyway. So, and I'm, it's not gonna preclude me from coming to meetings, but, and I asked the board, the COA board, when they came before the select board, the same question prior to town meeting, is I'd like to see what a definition of woefully inadequate is. Eight years on the board, I haven't had anybody tell me what's inadequate. I've had people tell me that we couldn't be in the meeting room because of such and such. And I, I get that. Some of, some of the scheduling. The COA board meeting was held in another room because there was German lessons going on and three people were occupying it. I would, I would just hope that as the Council on Aging proceeds in their meetings is that those definitions come back to this board in the community as what is described as woefully inadequate. I think it's something that if we're gonna go to town meeting and, and have board members get up and speak to that, Council on Aging board members, then we should back it up. I'd like to see some sort of written report as to what we're not doing there. I think that would be great to have because once the study is done, I'm sure it's not gonna end there. There's gonna be the next step. And to go to that next step, we're gonna have to be prepared to say, and I don't think we need to have a full-blown study to tell the citizens what board member believe is woefully inadequate. And, and some of you are dealing with it on a more day-to-day basis. I just think it's important that, that comes back to the town residents of what needs are missing up there.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to ask both our applicants and thank you again for applying is, what do you see yourself as the role of the COA relative to the director of our, our council, director of our adult center, Emily Perkins? What is your role relative to her role? And maybe Mr. Petrooff?
Well, I see us as advisory, excuse me. And, you know, I'd say in your comments, Paul, I think wherever we go, we need to go based on objective, data-based analysis of what we're doing and what we might need to do. And I've actually, some of the things that the Council on Aging has looked at, Mr. Gold, in terms of our role vis a vis the director, is to try to get some clarity through Steven and Town Council as to the various roles and responsibilities of Council on Aging, Faloka, the town, the manager, and especially with now, you know, the fairly recent, not too recent charter changes, which has kind of thrown a little bit of a, of a new dynamic into what has happened historically. So, you know, I'm looking for some, some clarity for that so that we can get those things squared away and focus on the work that we wanna be doing.
Any other?
I'd like Mr. Carey to answer the same.
I think in relation to the director, I agree with Bob, that our role is advisory. But advisory can come in many different guises. If we advise very strongly, I, I think that, that, although we don't give a directive, I think we can influence the, the director as to what direction we think is, is appropriate. And I think that's, that's about our, we try to offer both wisdom and advice, let's put it that way.
You know, one issue that seemed pretty alive when I was running last year and seems equally alive now is the question of whether we should rebuild and have a new senior center or whether the existing senior center can be sufficiently improved upon. Do either of you, have, have either of you thought about that question?
Well, I think that's the reason for the study. You know, we have, you know, three alternatives, you know, to work on what we have, add to what we have, or build new.
I would agree with that. I mean, I go back to data-based, objective analysis. It's got a lot of folks who are well-intentioned, who are committed and motivated to serve in the elderly and, and they have opinions, but we have to figure out the, the analysis of what the needs of the town are and what's the best answer to meet those needs.
Can I ask one more? Rob, I understand what you're saying and I don't disagree with you about that. My only point is that if we go to town meeting and our Council on Aging Board has stated and taken a vote about in a petition article and states that the Council on Aging is woefully inadequate, there's gotta be something that you guys already know about that I don't know about, for example.
I didn't make that, I didn't make that statement. I don't know if it was a statement by the Council on Aging or an individual.
But you're here to interview for Council on Aging.
I can't speak to that.
And I'm just saying if that data's out there, I'd like to see it, that's all.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's where we need to clarify the, the working relationship and the role of the council and the director within the constricts of, of the town government and, and work all together.
Well, it promises to be an exciting year. Thank you very much for volunteering again. Thank you. Historic Commission?
Okay, I thought it was much further down the alphabet.
No, actually, I was going to jump around. I figured I better stick to the alphabet. And we have two people interviewing, but tonight it will only be Mr. McKenna. And so that means we have available one more seat if anyone is interested.
Tim McKenna, 197 Farmington Road.
Three year, two?
Yes, three. Been on the committee for a while. I'd keep going.
Thank you very much for your service and volunteering again. It's a lot of fun to volunteer, right? It's a great, great mission. Any questions for, no?
So, and that was me that honked at 7:30 as I was driving by this morning.
Thank you very much. All right, and we're at Parks and Rec. If you, all three of you could come up and pull an extra chair up.
There is nobody here for that.
She didn't, she's not here. She's gonna do it another day. And so there's two three-year terms and we have three people interviewing, so it's a popular committee. And when you wanna come to speak, if you could also just pull a microphone near you.
You can't hear anyone.
And you wanna give each of your, your names and your addresses?
Doesn't work.
Oh, it's only for recording purposes.
Oh, for recording, I'm sorry, okay. My name is Jay Lieb. I live at 200 Tanglewood Drive in Long Meadow. I'm in the town just a month shy of 46 years. And I've served a full term on the Park and Recs Commission. And I think that we have developed a very good organization at this point under our chairperson and are finally getting some really good things happening, getting cooperation from the various athletic groups within the community.
Mr. Russell?
Jim Russell, 108 Bellehead Drive, Long Meadow. Chairman of the Park Board. Served nine and a half years back in the 60s and the 70s. When the last four tennis courts were built, I was chairman. Now we're getting ready to break ground for brand-new courts. Exciting thing for me. As last year, we had to close some court because of the damage to it. It would really be an honor to be reappointed to the Park Board and be chairman for the second go-around of tennis courts. I also serve as a board member of the Council on Aging. So I feel now that with the youths that we serve in town and with the old geezers like myself, that we serve a broad spectrum of the residents in town. I've lived in Long Meadow with my wife for 49 and a half years. I enjoy what I'm doing. I'm retired. It's good to be able to give back to the community for the successes I have received in our 101-year-old family business, celebrated 100 years last year. Four generations of Russells. So I ask for your support, your trust in continuing. I will, if I am reappointed, I will be serving 21 years and my term is up. Thank you.
Mr. Rintul?
Yes, Jeff Rintul. I've been a resident of Long Meadow. I guess I'm the infant in the group. I've been here for 14 years. Grew up next door in East Long Meadow, made the move over. I am not only a resident of town, but I'm also a customer of the Park and Rec Department. I have two children that have attended Greenwood, various sports activities for approximately 10 years. I've been extremely happy with everything that's going on. And I feel that as, as Mr. Russell and Mr. Lieb, I would like to also give back to my community. And what I see is the Park Department and the Park and Rec Department is something that I could provide a positive impact to in my experience.
Thank you. Questions? Mark?
I'll ask all three the same question. That is, what do you see as the role of the board of the Park and Rec Committee relative to the Director of Parks and Recreation, Barry Jarvis?
Okay, so my, my feeling about the Director for the Park and Rec is that we have, it's, it's a, it's a business. And we have to run it like a business, but we also have to look at it as an asset of the town. And to be able to say, the town has these beautiful parks, these beautiful fields, and compare it to other towns such as Wilbraham, Summers, and say, are we offering our children, our seniors, the, the individuals in town, the ability to have the same experiences and be able to play on the same types of fields that our, you know, our neighbors do? I think being able to keep them accountable for what they need to do as far as keeping their, their budget intact, keeping their, you know, their rules and regulations intact, as well as being able to come to the board and say what they need in order to help get their mission accomplished.
As a member of the Park Commission, I feel five personnel that make up the nucleus of the Park Board all have different business accomplishments. And we're able to guide the Director, Barry Jarvis, through the process of budget, new innovative ideas. It's a known item that we are choking for land space. And the number of children that we serve is unbelievable. And if we could magically wave the magic wand and find more space for more fields, I'd be a very happy camper.
Oh, excuse me, okay.
You know, I worked one term with the Park and Recs Commission and Barry Jarvis, who is an extremely competent professional. And, you know, the charter changed her abilities and the Park and Recs abilities to do a lot of things. We are no longer responsible for maintenance of the field. It's just the operations of the field, making sure there are adequate facilities for the different sports, being able to say that one sport is no longer being utilized as much as it had in the past and we need to move us into a sport that weren't children involved. And the Council on Aging, the senior center, is something that we're involved with, as is the preschool at Glenwood. And, you know, that's a building that needs a lot of help at this point. And we've been instrumental as a group to get whole new ceiling tiles put in because they were pretty bad. There were holes in them and that, there is some asbestos in the building, so we had to be very careful how we did it. But I think our board works as a cohesive board and I do believe that the record of this past two years has been exemplary. All the new members have done really great things and I'm proud to be a part of that group.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, I was gonna ask on that charter change, are you satisfied with the way the facilities are being maintained?
Any of us?
Yeah, any of you.
I could, I would say that as a group, and I, I should only speak for myself, we are not satisfied with the way the Greenwood Park building is being maintained. It's not always clean. The children are sometimes in areas that haven't been cleaned in a week or two weeks. The floors can be really suspect. The professionals, the paid professionals, are sometimes acting like cleaning people because the facilities are not being cared for properly. There is a contract out. There's a professional cleaning company that is not doing the job properly at this point.
Has there been feedback on that issue?
Please?
I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Letters were written, memos were sent. I went in as chair and walked through with the chairperson over at the Greenwood Center. I went in as chair and walked through with the chairperson over at the Greenwood Center, and there were ants crawling around on the floor, kids on the floor. If I, if they were working for me, I would have fired them, right on the spot.
Were the facilities in better shape under the old organization? Were they maintained better? If we got an organizational slippage, or is it just the sign of the times?
Richard, I feel I have one arm tied behind my back, because way back when, when we were elected, we were responsible for everything, and we made sure the fields, we made sure the custodial duties were taken care of. It's very difficult to take criticism when we do not have the control over fixing the problem. And it hurts, to be very candid with you, because I take great pride, pride in living in Long Meadow, having seen my two children grow up, play sports, move away, and we get the complaints, and we have to say, that's not our department. So to answer your question, I know time must move forward, and I know that the charter change was a purpose, but it hurts us. We're dealing mainly with children, it's one thing to deal with adults, but when you're dealing with children, where is their voice?
Any other questions? Mark?
Yeah, Mr. Rintul, I just have a quick question for you. How do we get the parks back into Parks and Recreation? We seem to focus an awful lot on recreation, youth sports, youth sports, youth sports, and then when we're done, we do more youth sports and more fields for youth sports. How do we get the parks back into Parks and Recreation, and what role should the Parks and Recreation Committee have in doing that?
I think we need to make sure that our town has, that the parks are first of all known about. I lived in town, on the other side of town, on Birch Road for several years before I even knew about Turner Park. When I started looking at a house on Cranwell Lane, wow, look at this great park, kind of took a ride around. I think we have to at least, and I know there's things on the website, but just kind of, hey, you know, maybe get the papers involved, the Long Meadow News, and say, hey, these are some great assets in town. I mean, there's a beautiful lake back there, if you have a dog, any dog in their light mind, it'd go running into that water, and, you know, just getting people to know about it, I think is great, and just get the word out.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thank you.
We'll be voting at our next meeting. The Recycling Commission. There's two three-year terms and one-year associates.
And I would be looking at the one-year associate.
You would, okay. You want to state your names and what you're looking for?
Yeah, I'm Arlene Miller, I live at 608 East Greenwich Road, I've been a member of the Recycling Commission for many years, over 35 years resident of the town of Long Meadow. My day job is with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and I do trash and recycling with 100 towns in western Massachusetts, and it's a privilege to be able to translate some of that experience back and give it back to the town.
Thank you.
Liz Bone, 34, Elizabeth Circle, and I've been on six years.
And you're looking for the three-year term?
Yes.
Erwin Purse, 67 Windsor Place, I've been on the Commission, give or take 15 years, currently the chairman of the Commission, and I'm looking for the three-year.
And thank you very much for waiting this long to interview. It's been a long wait.
Education.
And thank you for your service. Any questions for recycling? Mark?
Just, as all current incumbents, I think your qualifications are pretty well-known, but what is it you want to do in the next term that you're here that you haven't been able to do, or what would you do differently that you, from what you've been doing when you're reappointed, or if you're reappointed? What were we supposed to say?
Well, I guess the next, next year, the curb-side contract comes up, and I think there's going to be some issues that the town might be considering in terms of collection, curb-side collection. There is always that single stream word out there, and automated trash, and issues to look at financially in terms of that. And I think this group has been very committed to the recycling center, which we think is a goldmine, great resource to the community, and I think anybody that's been there recognizes its role to help the community do stuff. I would think we need, we could strengthen things, we can improve that, we can improve communication, we work on that all the time.
The recycling center, years ago, really, we spent the bulk of our time on that, a disproportionate amount of our time, and we did a number of things for the last, over the last 10 years, that really took us from almost a management or supervisory role at the recycling center, and that really belongs to DPW now. We wrote a, an application some years ago to have the recycling center certified as a transfer station. And that was critical because without that, we wouldn't be able to collect a number of things, bulk waste, we wouldn't be able to have the swap shop down there. Normally, that application is written by an engineering firm, we didn't have the budget for it, the town didn't have the budget, so we took that project on ourselves, and it's really made a difference for us, the way we spend our time, and for the town. We also worked with DPW to make it a much more professionally supervised, professionally-run operation. Again, years ago, we catch-as-catch-can, did the management down there, and they, you know, Mike Rabel and his crew really do a great job. So we've been able to take the time we spent on that and really focus more on the curb-side waste reduction program, trying to promote that, promote recycling and waste reduction at the curb in each household.
Anything with you, aren't there?
I'm always looking to increase the recycling rate.
Arlene and Liz do a tremendous amount of work in the schools, promoting recycling, offering suggestions on how to better recycle in the schools, and both of them do a tremendous amount of work there.
And one of the things we want to do in the next few years is, there's going to be a new food waste ban in the Commonwealth for large generators, and it would be really great if we could do more composting, and I know Marie's been involved with this, in schools, and offer more opportunities for composting in the town.
And in the homes.
And in the...
I found out you can go down to DPW and for $40, buy a compost bin, and they give you a little shovel, and people...
A scrap bucket.
Scrap bucket, and so you can start doing it in your homes. And the, that's one of the things your committee has done, is purchase some of these compost bins for residents if they're interested.
We should announce, we'd be remiss if we didn't announce that, we're going to say the new calendar everybody's very excited about, their July 1st to June 30th recycling calendar will be included in the reminder next week, that's the week of June 9th, so keep an eye out for that, for the 2014-2015 calendar, it will be an insert in that reminder next week.
And it'll also be on the website?
It will be, it's always on the website, but it will not be put on the website until the week after.
The week after, and we're, I was hoping we'd be able to get a link on the front page, so the people would be able to not have to go just to your page, but to find it right up front.
Yeah, so they could check their reminders, so they get it.
Yeah, all right, sounds wonderful. Any other questions? Alex?
Liz, you were mentioning the recycling rate. How is Long Meadow's recycling rate vis-à-vis similar towns, and what is it that we can do, and when I say we, what is it the Select Board could do to, you know, further that mission?
Well, I'm not...
The recycling rate?
Well, you have to know something.
This is what I do, is very good. Our recycling rate is about 30, 31%, and many of the, most of the communities around us do not have the recycling rate that we have. What you can do is recycle, all that you can, that would help, set an example, and certainly, you know, keep it in front of the residents. It's simple to do, it saves us money, and it's good for the environment, and your support...
But is there anything sort of more than, you know, admonitions? You know, and, I mean, I think kids get it, you know, I mean, I have young children, you know, that they, you know, are, you know, talking about not using plastic bags, and, you know, very environmentally conscious, but what is it that we could do to change incentives? I mean, is that something that you guys have thought about?
Sure, the biggest incentive we have, we've adopted, just some members sitting on your board voted to have the limited size of the barrel and the overflow bag.
Sure.
That's huge, that's huge, to help incentivize recycling and reduce waste. The next step, if you want to get bold, everything is in the pay-as-you-throw bag.
Full pay as you...
Full pay as you throw. That, that's the most, the biggest incentive, the state knows of. But I think, you know, we're doing a blend.
I think we do a very good job, and put together a program that is fair to residents.
And if we do start doing more of the organic composting, that's going to make a difference.
Huge.
Because it's not only decreases our weight, but that also is like another stream of recycling in some ways.
I mean, supporting, frankly, supporting this kind of concept in your town buildings is huge. I mean, you know, you walk through the town buildings, how many bottles and cans is a loosey-goosey in some of our town building recycling? You guys have the ability to say, this is not a black, this is not a gray issue, this is black and white, we're going to recycle, to your department heads. I mean, it's your leadership that can, can really promote, you're going to buy materials made from recycled content. We're working on grants now, and this is all stuff that's right up front. And we do, we do a very good job compared to many, many communities. Can we do better? Absolutely. And it's, it's, you guys, you know, you think, I'm not making platitudes, your leadership in that regard, saying, this is what we do, this is what we believe in, this is what we support, is, is very, very important, and don't minimize that at all.
Any other questions for recycling? Well, thank you, and I think this committee, again, it shows not only the wonderful volunteerism, but the expertise we have in our town, to be able to write that grant, and of course, Arlene, you are like statewide well, well-known, and we really appreciate the talent of your committee, thank you. Last but not least, but very patient, is Zoning Board of Appeals. Have I forgotten any other committee? And so there's, if you pull the extra chair up, there are a one-three-year and one-five-year, and we do have three people interviewing. So could you please state your name and what position you're interviewing for?
Marissa Comack, 10th Discount Road in Long Meadow. I would like the five-year member term, but I would appreciate the associate as well, if I could get a position on the board.
Thank you.
Monica Capinos, 84 Pine Wood Hills, Long Meadow. I've been on the Board as an associate for three years, and like an opportunity to serve again.
As the associate?
As an associate, yes.
David Lavenburg, 58 Maple Road. I've served on the Board since 2006, and it's been my privilege to serve, and I'd ask for a reappointment for the five-year term.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I asked the turn Lavenburg, why?
Why?
No, I appreciate what you're doing, but, and you've done, you've done an awful lot here. I guess my, my real question is, is, and for the folks who've been on, what would be the highest priority of the, of the Zoning Board of Appeals outside of handling zoning appeals from residents?
Well, I mean, understanding what the scope of the Zoning Board of Appeals is, which is handling variances, special permits, and appeals, and parking findings, I think the mandate of the Board could exceed that somewhat, I mean, it's not a statutory mandate, but from a motivational standpoint, is to take a leadership role in chipping away at the inconsistencies in our bylaw, which are in grave need of revision.
That, that came up during our budgeting processes, I apologize for, is that a resource issue, or is that a, some other issue that's moving that?
I don't, I don't know that it's a resource issue, Mark. I think there might be a difference of opinion and approach. I can tell you candidly what my approach would be, which is not to make wholesale revisions to the bylaw, but do them incrementally, because I was a part of the adventure, which was to change the bylaw on a wholesale basis, and it didn't happen. So I'm much more in favor of incremental changes, because I think that we can make some headway, but that's my view.
Any other questions?
I guess I'd ask Mr. Capino the same question, what do you see as issues that face the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Well, I noticed that sometimes when the special permits come up, or variances, it seems like they may not need to go through our system, and I'm not sure exactly why, but I think they come, they come down from us through the building inspector, and I'm not sure where the concern may be, but it just seems like sometimes they may not need to come through our department.
Thank you, I guess, and I'd like to ask Ms. Comack, just, what is it that you'd like to see done, that you'd like to accomplish as a member of the zoning board?
Well, I am an attorney, I'm a new attorney, actually. I've been an attorney for a year, I work with my father in West Springfield, and we do have a real estate practice, so I'm really, this is a topic that I'm passionate about, and I do, I would like to be involved in a town committee, I'm in the process of buying a house in Long Meadow myself, and I'd like to just get more involved, I think our generation needs to be more involved with the town. And I do know, just from experience dealing with real estate issues, that there, there is a statute that the Zoning Board does need to utilize in making their decisions, and I, I would like to use this as a learning process for myself, for my own, you know, practice, and also just, you know, to gain more knowledge on the topic, but I do feel like all of the members as well could learn as well to use the statute more. We do need to abide by it, there are requirements, and I don't know how strictly those are being followed, and I think that it can be an educational process for all of the members as well.
One question, Dave, how's attendance at your meetings? I know that, you know, some committees we have alternates that can vote, as long as they're within, how's, overall, you guys haven't had issues with quorums and...
Well, we did, yeah, we did, but only when we were short, meaning we didn't have a full eight-member board, so it's been, it's been pretty good, Paul. And the members are pretty, pretty committed, you know, I think they show up regularly, except when there's, you know, obvious conflicts that they have. And it's, it's a good board, well constituted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Remind me to sign up for Capitol Clinton. You can do that now.
I heard that. Thank you very much.
Any other interviews that I forgot or missed? Okay, thank you very much.
Is there no open positions on the Zoning Board of Appeals?
No, there'll be three people interviewing for two, so no, no open positions. All right, moving along to approval of the minutes of May 19th, 2014. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move, we approve the minutes of May 19th, 2014, subject to some, some corrections that I'll go through.
Second.
Okay, and what are the corrections?
You want to go over the ones I had too?
I may have the ones you had too, but I'll start at the beginning, I think that under announcements, Sabrina Feliciano is, I think she is the Public Affairs Specialist, not from the Public Affairs, Affairs Specialist. The, under the next paragraph, Select Board Comments, Mr. Santinello was concerned about the, it should be clay courts, not play courts, C-L-A-Y.
I wasn't sure, because I wasn't sure if it was P or C.
It's a C, clay courts.
It's also a little bit further down as well in the minutes.
Yeah.
Same thing.
It has it again, so you might...
I want to keep, I want to keep consistent.
Change them both, I guess. The election warrant, actually, the word sign should be a verb and not a noun, so it's not the sign election, it's just to sign the election warrant, so I'd eliminate the word sign from that heading, and also from the, Mr. Gold made a motion to approve the election warrant.
Okay.
Those are my...
Any other corrections?
Yeah, I have, well, I thought my motion with the PVTA, if we go down under the public hearing in the last paragraph, I thought my motion was to come back in six months with data to review it again.
I do recall that you were... I do recall that it was, it was a six-month.
So, that should just be added to the, the wording of the?
I'm not sure if that was part of the motion, I think you requested that we come back in six months, but I thought the motion was just to continue service with place the signs.
I, I know I asked for six months in there, because we need, we need dat, the idea was to come back with data.
Okay, and who seconded it? Mr. Foster, how do you feel about that change?
I think that's what he said.
So, you're uncomfortable with that?
That's my recollection of what, what the intent was, Maria.
Okay. Anything else? All right, all those in favor of the amended motion? Moving on to the charter committee, the last time we talked about this committee commission, people were asking for more information. I went on the MMA site, and I pulled a lot of the information out, and I also contacted the attorney who said she would be glad to speak to us about what some of the next steps were, and I wanted to see how people felt after reading how other towns were doing it, if we were ready for a charter committee to start the review process.
I'm no more convinced now than I was the last time we spoke about this, that we need to do this. I mean, if you just opened up part from Tops, I think it's the town at Tops Field, there's a, a, a pretty interesting thing in here that says that our, our warning would be, don't go into this unless you're serious about making changes and something's broken. And I don't think something's broken, and so that's why I'm not supporting this.
Well, anyone want, if there's no motion on the floor, we'll just move ahead. No one's interested in having a charter review. Okay, and I guess when it comes to some of the issues, such as was mentioned tonight about making it alternates rather than associates, we can do similar to what was requested by the community preservation committee, is people could just put in requests at town meetings for bylaw and charter changes. Okay, moving on then to the finance committee policies, there were two that were brought in front of us last time, everyone said they want to spend some more time looking at it for possible changes before we voted to adopt. Want to know how people felt about those policies?
Maria, unfortunately, they, they weren't on in our packet this, this time, and, and I know they showed up on the agenda, but.
Well, they were given to us the last time, and so I, I saw that, and I.
I understand that, but that was, but to vote on them, I guess, you know, I'd have done a better job of reviewing them, if they were in the packet, which is what I focused my effort on for this, for this meeting, as opposed to it. I'm, I'm no more prepared, I guess I'll tell you to, to talk about what I'm looking for those now than I was the last time.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean we can't talk about it, I think others ought to weigh in.
Anyone else have any changes or concerns in regards to the two policies?
I mean, I guess I'm kind of with Mark, in that I wasn't really focusing on those, because I was focusing on the packet.
All right, we'll move on, casino mitigation. There were some questions at the last meeting, and town manager was not here, so we decided to wait, and I understood there were some changes. So, did you want to go over those? Or did anyone have any questions in regards to the, the cost that came through? Did you want to say something before we go right into the questions?
Go ahead, start.
I have invoices, I have all but one invoice, which should be the sum of the costs of the lead-up and arbitration process. The spreadsheet invoices have come in since that spreadsheet that's in the back of your packet, since the packet was sent out, and I have an updated one here someplace, but the total now is probably going to be closer to a hundred and, I think like $154,000. We did, we did, we had not yet received invoices from Parsons Brinkerhoff for their work, which will come in around $11,000, and, and that would be, actually, that would be the difference, sorry, so it'd be a hundred and, I think, I think it was a hundred, 144 was the last one, I'm sorry about that.
144?
I'm looking at 130.
Right, but I think it, it was updated since then, and it was, I had an updated spreadsheet that I brought with me to go over this. Oh, here it is, sorry. So, the additional invoice, I don't think that this one included the cost of the arbitrator.
Yeah, it did.
No, for the, for the other two arbitrators, the town's arbitrator, Mr. Hayward, the town has to pay him directly. So, that invoice came in after the packet was sent out, and Parsons Brinkerhoff is.
What's the $970.57 that says arbitrator cost?
We, we received that as, as a bill from JAMs, and I think it's, I don't know if the invoice is in it.
That's one of the arbitrators.
That's, there was a bill for, there's two bills for the hearing itself. There's the one from JAMs, which is that bill that has generated kind of a net amount due 970, and it's not clear that we owe that amount anyway, because MGM has two-thirds responsibility for the arbitration hearing. The bill that the town is responsible for is the one for Mr. Hayward, who was the town's selected arbitrator. The invoices themselves, I forwarded them all to Brandon Moss, and he's kind of going through them to make sure that before they're released publicly, there's nothing privileged in, in the writing of them, and he's going to come up with a final accounting of what he believes. We are going to be reimbursed from MGM, and what the town's costs that won't be reimbursed will be, and, and under the rules, the town is responsible for a third of the arbitration costs that won't be reimbursed through the voluntary disbursement process.
So, we don't have a final decision on what the final invoices are, and so this is just sort of like an estimate on where we are?
No, I mean, we have the invoice, with the exception of Parsons, but like I said, I, I heard from the consultants that the amount is eleven, around $11,000. So, we have, again, so the latest, the invoices we have in hand totaled $143,486. There'll be another invoice in the neighborhood of $11,000. Brandon's going to go through and, and sort out what we'll be pursuing through a, what's called a letter of authorization, basically going to the gaming commission to have them process the reimbursement, like a voluntary disbursement, we talked about that some months ago, about the process under the Gaming Act regulations. That's the mechanism MGM has said they wanted to do, rather than have the corporate office cut us a check directly. And as long as we know that we are applying for that jointly, and not going to have a hearing about what are reasonable costs, that is, Brandon believes that's a reasonable way to do it, but if it's going to be us having to, if they're going to contest our request, then that's something we'll have to deal with.
Okay. Questions? Alex?
So, I must say, when we had this before, the way I was reading it, is there were some, quite a number of months of our, of Murphy Hess that was not included in it.
Correct.
Because as I'm reading it, there's something for November, there's something for December, and then there's, and then there's something for May. Okay, does, is that all of Murphy Hess's expenses? Okay, so these sort of blank months, January, February, March, April, that's all rolled into the May number? Okay.
I mean, the consultant understood that, because we were working on kind of a reimbursement situation, that MGM had to give us the money to pay the bills, we are not doing a traditional monthly, bill comes in, the end of the month, we pay a check out, they've been kind of going on faith and credit, quite honestly.
Murphy Hess.
Murphy Hesse, MRI, Parsons, Greenman, Pedersen, GPI, the other traffic consultants.
Mark?
Stephen, I guess I have a couple of questions about this, and one is, are we incurring costs for our attorney to figure out the costs?
Yeah.
You know, if, if the attorney's putting together what, what the costs are for whomever, are we continuing to incur costs?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't, I don't know for certain that he's not going to bill us for it, but I think he was just doing it as a way to tie all the loose ends of the case together.
Okay, fine, I, I, you know, it just came up that. I guess the other thing that, that concerns me a little bit is that we had town authorization to spend a certain amount of money, and, you know, we've flown way past that by 50% or more. The good news is, we've also won an, an arbitration hearing that MGM is going to pay reasonable, a reasonable share of that. But I guess the question is, what if we hadn't? What if we hadn't won that? You know, I, I, I'm concerned about the, the way these bills just sat back, sat back, sat back, and then boom, all of a sudden, there's, I don't know, $80,000 in, that got billed in the last month, and, and I'm not throwing stones here, I'm just saying, you know, because, I'll tell you, when I saw even the $133,000 that was distributed to us, that was way beyond what we had, I had thought at least been led to believe we were running at that point. I understand that the arbitration charges for Murphy Hesse was not included in the original estimate, and was going to be supplemental. What they charged for that was what they charged for it, I mean, and just for public discourse, it was $54,276 for preparing and executing the, the arbitration, is what I.
I think, I mean, if you look at it, it's actually several months, I mean.
You see, I don't, you see, and that, I don't.
See, that's, see, if you see, the, the last bill was December, so that 54, according to what Stephen just told me, was January, February, March, and April, together.
I guess the fact is, Alex, we don't know the way it's written.
Well, that's what he, you're right, that was totally not clear to me.
How much of that is from arbitration, and how much?
No, you're right, I mean, it sounds like it's all rolled in.
And retrospectively, we're in a good place, because we're going to have a word that MGM is going to reimburse us for hopefully most of this, if not all but the cost of the final arbitrator that, that we have to, we have to pay for. But I guess I'm, I'm concerned about the process that led us here a little bit.
Well, Mark, I can, I can address that if you'd like.
Yeah.
We hadn't spent very much money up through our designation hearing. We were well within our budget for, to get designated. Once we achieved designation, it was a certainty that we were going to be reimbursed for our legal and consulting fees under the Gaming Act regulations. So, at that point, since we knew we were going to get reimbursed because we had been designated, and the reason why we knew that is because when North Hampton was not designated, they were also denied their letter of auth, their, their disbursement request. So, they ended up not being reimbursed the cost to prepare for their designation hearing. And under the law, if you are designated surrounding community, you get reimbursed for these costs. And so, it became, and as you remember, the timeline really between designation and preparing for the arbitration here was pretty compressed.
Correct.
And so, because we knew we were going to get paid back, we basically just did the best, did what we needed to do to get ready for our hearing. And so, if, if the suggestion is we didn't monitor the budget carefully to prepare for the hearing, that's true, our focus was on preparing our best case to win.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I have more in common, I'm just shocked at the cost of municipal resources. I thought they were the folks actually doing the least amount of work for the town based on, you know, the conversations we had, I thought it was more the folks from Parson, I expected the Parsons and GPI, that, you know, that those guys be up here in municipal resources, and, and that's the only thing that just took me back, that I thought that that was the lower-end cost.
I can explain that a little bit as well, if you want.
No, it's, I just, it's just a comment, I mean, if you can, I mean, that's fine, but it's not.
Well, I think, I, I think it merits, I mean, because it, to some extent, you know, we haven't really talked much about the hearing and all of that, and all of the, you know, I think the board was aware of the preparation we were doing and the nature of our argument, but, you know, GPI was, their fee was really to just prepare a presentation for the arbitration panel and be there on that day to testify, and some, you know, preparatory conference calls and things like that. Parsons had done work for us in preparation for our designation hearing, but they were working off of more substantial reports from both GPI that had been done for the Pioneer Valley Planet Commission, they paid for that, and Ty and Bond had done some work on our own intersections, some, I think in 2011. So, they, so they were just really taking base documents and going from there. MRI really created new information, where GPI and Parsons were giving their analysis of existing information, and one of, and I, the, you know, level of data collection that MRI got into with our police and fire department, as well as our finance department, you know, it got pretty complex in terms of how they were developing their formulas, and I, but I can tell you that that information was extremely compelling for our argument at the arbitration hearing, so it, you know, yeah, I, I'll be honest, I was, as the bills rolled in, I was a little, that's a lot of money, but it was obvi, obviously money well spent, because we prevailed, but either way, we were extremely well-prepared, and had a very solid argument, based on the information that was, that was generated through these consultants and through our attorneys, and I honestly, it's one of the, if not the, one of the most in-depth and fulfilling, you know, projects or, you know, situations that I've ever had to work on, and the level of creativity and commitment and, you know, all hands on deck was really inspiring.
And Marie, can I just, I want to make one comment, that the public understands that, we remind them that, you know, the, the fees, a lot of these fees are supposed to be reimbursed by MGM, and Attorney LaHane said one of the first things he would do was write to MGM, and we saw those letters right off the bat, and obviously, he hasn't been successful in drawing some of that money our way, but I just want to remind folks that, yes, we are at a budget number, but there, not all of this, I understand, will be reimbursable, but.
Yeah, I think it'll end up being about, and I hesitate to have the final numbers, because Brandon is going through this stuff, and there's some, you know, not back and forth necessarily, but some, this is reimbursable, this is not, it'll end up, he thinks, being about $14,000, that'll be unreimbursed town share. So, there will be some direct cost to the town, we did have the appropriation for $100,000, so obviously, our ultimate net cost is going to be well within that. And we had, once or twice, late last year, submitted a request for a voluntary disbursement from MGM, and they denied it. And one of the strategic decisions that we made along the way was to not pursue dispersments during the course of the process with the MGM, with the gaming commission, we, we made a strategic decision to focus on a designation hearing, only on our designation petition, and then an arbitration hearing, obviously only at arbitration. And I think that turned out to be a good decision, because we saw what some of the other communities, we felt like if North Hampton had simply waited and not submitted for dispersment at the same time that they submitted for designation, they may have been able to have a, a better time to make a case at a separate dispersment hearing, and Brandon has watched a few others and said that, you know, that we timed it pretty well on that, so that was a good choice for the board.
I just wanted to make a comment on municipal resources, they really sent one of their top guys in to testify for us, which was really, really valuable, because other towns did not go on the public safety issue.
Yeah.
So, I was very impressed with the work they did and the dedication to our case. So, I can sort of understand those bills going up a little higher, because we weren't expecting that to be so central to our case, but I, I think it was.
It was.
And then the other point that Mark said, one of the reasons we are seeing bills that we didn't expect is because we did have so much pushback from MGM, and again, we might see the same a little bit now when we're talking about the reimbursement, and they put in the idea of reasonable fees, and we need to do what we can to try to recoup as much as that money. And I agree with that strategic decision to wait, because we did see the board start to muddle the issues, and I'm glad to see that our attorney now is dedicating to try to get that money.
The commission.
Yeah.
So, the commission.
The commission was muddling the two issues when they were brought at the same time.
Right.
And so, having our attorney work on that now, we really appreciate him putting that advocacy forward, because we want as much, of course, reimbursed as we can. Mark?
Yeah, just a quick comment, I, I speak for myself, but I suspect I echo the thoughts of the other four members of the select board, and Stephen. of the other four members of the Select Board. And Stephen says, this isn't something I really want to do again very quickly. It was a ton of work on it. Everybody's part of a lot of late hours and that kind of stuff. But I think even in something like this that you don't even anticipate doing again, it might be worth asking the town manager to sit down and look at, what did we do right? What would we do differently if similar, although not, certainly not casino, were to come up again? And I think you can always learn from what we did. We did a lot of things right, but there's always things you can learn from. And I don't think as an organization, as a town, we often take the time to sit down and say, you know, if something like this came up again, you know, what can we learn from it? And I think it might be worth taking a couple hours to think about that.
Any other questions on the mitigation costs? All right, why don't we move on to new business? Approval of the block party request?
We approve the block party as requested for Farmington Road for June twenty-second.
Richard's second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay. And now, our CFO is here to discuss bond anticipation notes.
The town has a bond anticipation note that we come to do with the end of the month. It's itemized under ban six-one-seven dash one. It's nine hundred and eighty-six thousand. It's comprised of four projects, water mains at Primrose, the fiber optic network system, and our water and sewer pump stations. Obviously, we must pay off that note, and we will do such. Because they were within the FY fourteen budget, there was a certain paydown on the water mains at Primrose and Fiber Optic last December. The water and sewer pump stations were just issued in December, so we'll be able to pay off a little bit of those now. And those paydowns are itemized for you at forty-one-five, fifty-five-four-seventy. And we're also looking to bond, in anticipation, the, our small portion of the project of the drainage at Woodside, Williams, and Merryweather. Town had authorized us for two hundred and ninety-three thousand. It looks like we're approaching that number in total, once that is finally paved and completed. We are also looking to bond money for the high school project here. Right now, the state is withholding some money from us, even though the anticipated overage in the town share is going to be roughly, you know, under five hundred thousand. The state has been withholding retainedage, and we are internally funding the cash flow of that. And at this point in time, we need about one point one eight million dollars, so we do not have a deficit in our accounts at the end of June thirtieth. If we do have a deficit in our accounts, we'll be penalized on our free cash estimate for next year. So that's why I want to take care of it at this point in time. In the October snowstorm, you folks, when I was here on the nineteenth, I believe, had asked some questions about, you know, what was the final cost of that? And I believe I had submitted a, kind of a summary form. Currently, we're, have about one point six-two-seven million dollars that we've internally financed. That one point five million dollars is anticipated to come in on Friday. That will leave us about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that the town would have deficit financing at this point in time. We are anticipating, there is still another six hundred thousand dollars worth of reimbursements outstanding, but from a cash flow perspective, so again, so we don't have a deficit in our accounts, we need about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to cover at June thirtieth the deficit, so we're not penalized in free cash. We will receive bids on the twelfth of June. I'm here kind of tonight because I will not, I'm unavailable on the sixteenth to come before you. Mary Pequenot will be here with the results of that bid and have the paperwork for you folks to sign. But I kind of just wanted to lay the groundwork of what was going on. And if there's any questions or concerns from the board, I'm here to address them.
So you're just here to answer questions? You don't need any action from us today?
There's no action taken. Again, your motions, your votes, your signatures will all be done, hopefully on the sixteenth. Again, I just wanted to set the stage in case you did have questions. You know, if I don't have an answer tonight, I can certainly have time to get them to you for the sixteenth.
Any questions? Paul?
Paul, when it comes to the high school, I mean, we were, we have been given reports that, you know, three, four hundred thousand was a number that, hopefully I read it wrong, but I'm looking at one point one eight million.
Right. That one point one eight million is comprised of two, really two portions. We are still anticipating that four hundred and seventy thousand dollar number was last, I think, recited. That will be the town share of this. The state right now, as with normal construction contracts, they are also withholding money from reimbursement until all the paperwork is finalized. So we're anticipating roughly the, you know, the seven hundred thousand dollar reimbursement to come in. And the combination of those two, the money coming from the state, the seven hundred thousand, and our share, the four seventy, would pay off this one point one eight million. So we have, but we internally have to finance it now because the money is in the state's hand as opposed to our hands.
Is it the intent, when the state sends back their seven hundred thousand dollars, to finance the other four hundred and seventy via the bond that was originally authorized?
That would be a decision for you folks to make, if you wanted to do that or not. I think a lot would depend on what free cash comes in, you know, what potentially is on the fall town meeting. If you did want to spread that four seventy, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars out over a number of years, we certainly have the ability to do such. But it's going to be, you know, for the most part, your decision. I would make recommendations at the time, but again, it'll be before you for that final.
And how long is, because of the bans for the whole, for all these other projects, it's all in there? How long did you say the ban was for?
This ban is for six months.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark?
Paul, what's our anticipated payback of, I guess, principal or ban, you know, or pay down, to use your phrase, of this over the next six months, or even over the next year? So next year's budget?
Which way? Are you talking about in general, all of them?
Yeah, in general of, you know, the sewer water, the projects that are involved.
Let's exclude the October snowstorm because, again, we have six hundred thousand outstanding. And hopefully by December, that will be taken care of, and we will get more than enough to cover this. And the same with the high school. Right.
Come back from-
All the other projects are predicated on a five-year payback. So if it is a, for some of these, this is the first year that the amounts are being taken out. As an example, the sewer and water pump station were initially authorized under a ban last December. The drainage at Woodside, Williams, and Merryweather, this is the first authorization for that ban. The water mains at Primrose, we've already made two paydowns. We would have three more fiscal years, and I believe twenty-seven-two, to pay off those in full. And I think we have three more, I'm sorry, four more years on the fiber optic. We've had one paydown. We're paying off roughly eighty-eight thousand dollars a year on that. So we'd have four more years on the fiber optic. All those, again, in total, are going to equate to five-year outstanding bans.
So on, a rough estimate is ten percent for every six months, twenty percent every year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alex?
So, Paul, on the October snowstorm, if I'm reading your spreadsheet correctly, where we hope to be is a situation where we end up having to be on the hook for one point six million dollars?
We are currently on the hook for one point six million dollars. Where we hope to be is more the estimate in the middle, that once we are reimbursed-
Sorry, where is that on your spreadsheet?
In the middle column.
Yeah, right.
So that revised estimate, you see a negative four hundred and thirty-six. If we were to receive the full six hundred thousand dollars that is still in limbo, that four hundred and thirty-six would go back into the town's reserves.
Okay. I guess I didn't quite follow that.
You can't talk about it out loud.
What's that?
I think what you're saying is, we come out ahead on the deal.
Right. We come out ahead. With all the reimbursements that we received, plus the money that we've already appropriated, because we were, our original estimate did not include the money from the state. That was a pleasant surprise that we got. By that time, we had put in, you know, almost two million dollars worth of reserves. And had we had known that the state was going to put in nine hundred and fifty-one, we never would have made that high of appropriation. But by the time that the state gave us money, again, we had put in two million plus in reserves, our original share was two point four million.
Right, I see that. And that's why I was asking, because it looks like in the middle column, it says town share one point six million dollars. One point six-
Right, the one point six, right.
That's after we hope, after we get all our reimbursements.
After we get all our reimbursements.
Okay, that's what I understand. Where we are right now, according to here, is the three point seven. Town share, three point seven million.
Right. And that three point seven will be reduced, again, with the three point seven, we've already put in two point one out of our own appropriations.
Right. I mean, that's money that we've already spent. No, what I'm really trying to interest is sort of, not so much what we have to pay in the future, but what has been the total cost of the October snowstorm? And it sounds like, under the best-case scenario, what it will end up costing the town is one point six million dollars.
Right.
And currently, we're at three point seven.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. And why don't we move on to the next item that you wanted to talk about, the water sewer?
I wanted to have a preliminary discussion on the water and sewer. You know, I think there was a little prep done at the budget, and people saw how high the water cost from the City of Springfield went, and obviously, they're going to have an effect on the water rates. I've updated my basic spreadsheet from what was submitted to you in the FY fifteen budget presentation. The major changes from what was handed to you back in February to present are basically two factors. At the last town meeting, there was some bond authorizations made for water, for both water and sewer. As an example, the water, we authorized mains at Edgewood and Glenwood. And for the sewer, we authorized some bonding for the Norris Interceptor Sewer Design and the sewer lines in Colton Place. I've inserted, going on our past practice of doing twenty percent per year on the bans and paying those off, I've inserted what the debt service would be in that last column for all of those projects. And I've updated the revenues are, not necessarily the revenues from the rates, but the ancillary revenues we get from interest and other work that the DPW does and has fees for, to come up with an estimated water and sewer rate for FY fifteen. You see what they are. The sewer remains the same. The water skyrockets. And the water skyrockets roughly thirty-nine cents from two thirty-nine to two seventy-eight. Thirty-four cents of that in my letter is attributable directly to the charges from the City of Springfield. And I put, there's a couple other things that we probably should take and have a discussion on. You know, I know last year, there was questions of, we had the bond, we had the bonds authorized. I'm at it maybe, might be defined as an accelerated rate of payback because I'm using a five-year payback. There was discussion last year to elongate that into, you know, ten. We could probably go out even twenty years. The actual cost of that will be higher over the longer term because of the interest. But that was one of the discussions that was had last year, and certainly could be taken into consideration this year to moderate that proposed rate. The other thing that is taking place, the sewer reserve is fairly ample. It is on the bottom of those sheets where I have the rates actually proposed. I'm estimating that June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, our sewer retained earnings will be, still be over half a million dollars, five hundred and nineteen thousand, to be precise. Have a possibility of using some of those reserves to lower the rate so that the combined rate for water and sewer is a little more palatable. I'm not making that recommendation with the water, as the estimated retained earnings for water at the end of June is just over two hundred thousand. And again, we have the circumstance where we set the rate now for the consum, or we set the rate, you know, soon, for the consumption that will be taking place roughly from August first through, you know, the end of, through February first. And that dictates that we only really have one revenue stream with that new rate in it. Because what we'll collect in September will be at the old rate, that we already have currently in place, the FY fourteen rate, if you follow that. So that creates a dilemma, especially when there's such a high increase in the water. I mean, it will not create a dilemma in the sewer because, you know, the rate is really the same. But when there's such a high increase being proposed here for the water, that will create a dilemma in our overall, how we're getting our money and when we're getting our money. So again, a couple things to consider in the final determination. And I didn't know if there were any other thoughts from board members of any other alternatives or any way you wanted to see these rates being proposed, or any other ideas that you had.
Mark?
Paul, just a couple of questions. Can you go over again why we defer the implementation of these rates? I mean, these rates go into effect on July first of two thousand and fourteen as a calendar date. But our first billing that goes out is-
This, the board, it would be the Select Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners, made a conscious decision so that the rate was known before consumption took place. So that the consumption that we're going through right now, and the way that the rate, the way that the billing is done, there's a read on roughly August first with a bill date that goes out September first. There is a read date that is February first with a bill date of March first. So the bill date that we have in August, which is now FY fifteen, is for the consumption of the last six months. And that will be at the rate that was in place for those last six months. In the case of the water, it's two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Again, this board made a conscious decision to set the rate prior to consumption. The new rate would take effect for the consumption that would begin on August first through the end of January, and we would collect that in March. So I hope that was clear because it's, you know, it's-
But it is for water used beginning August first. So we missed the months of July, essentially the month of July, which is consumed in the new fiscal year and theoretically billed by Springfield at the new rate, right? Because our price increase with Springfield doesn't go into effect till July first, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's going to be the month of July that Springfield's going to bill us at the new rate, but we're still billing our residents at the old rate?
Yes.
Okay. But after that, it's just a deferral of our billing, really. Because then, starting August first, we're billing them at the new rate that we're getting charged from-
It is a deferral, but again, you have to, the timing of our revenue, the actual cash coming into the town.
Oh, right. I get that. But, you know, I mean, we're going to get cash in next fiscal year, which is really for use in, I get that part. But it's like the difference between accrual and cash, kind of thing.
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
Kind of, okay. Marie, for what it's worth, because of the history we've had with water rates and what I think I can anticipate may happen with a water rate that's going up or would project to go up, I forgot what this number was, but it was eight percent or-
It's thirty-nine cents.
So it's probably something like-
Sixteen percent.
Sixteen percent. I'd like to discuss the potential of either one of Paul's recommendations to either extend the bonding life of water projects, which seems to me to make sense since we're installing these mains and don't intend to change them for ten or fifteen years. Or potentially, and I think this is a lousy thing to do, but use sewer retained earnings to lower the sewer rate to compensate for the higher water rate. But that just postpones till next year when you don't have, it's, again, it's using one-time money for ongoing things, and I'm not sure that that's the smartest thing to do.
Especially since we have sewer and water infrastructure we have to worry about. Alex?
Last year, when we were looking at this water and sewer rates, one of the things that I was really want to look at was tiered rates. Is that something that we could have before us? We're discussing it this year?
If the board so desires, we could look at those. I think we might have to use some prior year data that we have in tiering that to make a determination. It's, again, I think we have the information. I think, Mark, you developed a spreadsheet years ago.
And the spreadsheet still works, the model still works. Alex, one of the issues we had was- Works, Alex, one of the issues we had with that, and I think it applies to that, was, you know, if you recall three years ago and before that, we actually had billing based on a fixed cost plus, plus variable cost, kind of like your electric bill.
Right, right.
And, and we were reminded by our town council that our bylaws say that water will be paid for by usage. And that's the, that denied us, in his opinion, the ability to do anything but a, a flat rate based on usage. And so, I, I'm not gonna be playboy here, and I'm not gonna defend what it says, other than to say that we've had a ruling that said all we can do right now is charge everybody the same usage, X number of dollars per hundred cubic yards or a hundred cubic feet of, of water used, period. And anything different from that as a billing system would require a bylaw change. Do I like it? No, but that's what we have been told.
I remember having this discussion last year, and it sort of was contradictory to the tiered rates that this board, I don't know if you were on it, maybe it was even before you, this is.
No, no, I, I remember one is, I wasn't on the board, but I remember the firestorm.
Right, right, that's a separate issue of whether you wanna do it, but, I mean, what you're seeming to suggest is that it's impossible.
We should not have done what we did for five years, that's what our, our town council.
Well, yeah, what we did was for five, I mean, that, those tiered rates lasted.
Six months.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's not what you're talking about.
Part of that, we had a, a fixed charge plus, because I, Paul, you were, you remember, we.
No, I, I mean, but the point is, it would be based on consumption, it's just, I mean, it's just that you have different rates for different tiers of usage.
Was that from Attorney Martell?
It was, at the time.
Want to have a follow-up opinion from Attorney Martell?
Well, I don't think we need to, I, I, I mean, I'd like to look at it, but, I mean, I, I don't think what Mark is suggesting is would, would prevent us from actually having tiered rates. Whether we want to do it is a policy discussion for us to have. And, uh, the, the concern I had last year was, you know, it was sort of presented at the last minute and we, we didn't have time, we didn't have that alternative before us, and so I'm glad that Paul's bringing this up now so we can look at different alternatives, um, prior to having a vote on it.
But do you wanna have, um, there would have to be a consensus among the group to have that on the agenda for tiered rates? Or is it too late to do tiered rates? Is this something we should have discussed back March?
Um, again, I, I'd have to work with the DPW, um, we, you know, it probably would take us thirty days, it would still be in time. We, we probably could get you something if it's so desired. Um, again, these rates really have to be voted, uh, by mid-July. So we do have some time to make, uh, an honest attempt at it.
I mean, I think if the board wanted to vote on a directive now, it would be helpful because of, it does take a substantial amount of effort to do this work.
So, I guess there's two, uh, one vote that we're looking at is to extend the bond anticipation notes. Um, and the other is if you wanted to ask the, for a directive on tiered, um, rates. Is there anything else that we wanted to bring up? Paul?
There's a, there's a lot of things to consider. First of all, tiered rates will do nothing but increase the cost to the lower-end consumer. Because as you tier it, you will have people, whether they have five or six people in the family, they like to water their lawn or whatever, will start to cut back. So if you wanna do it to instill conservation, then you have to look at it that way, because what you will do as the top tier cuts back, everybody's gotta pay for the water, and it's gonna increase the cost to the lower-end consumer. So, that's, and that's what we found also when we did that tiered rate, is that not only did it increase the cost for the people who water their lawns, but as they start to cut back, the lower end, we had to raise rates for the lower end, it's gonna happen. The most important thing to look at with this is I, I would urge the board not to touch water and sewer rates. We are where we are because of the projects we approved. And when you approve the projects two months before you vote on the rates, that's the problem you get into. And I would also urge the board going forward that we have quarterly water and sewer meetings, separate from Select Board meetings, to talk about these things. The issue is, you can defer the project for Edgewood and Glenwood and take five or six cents, is it, or is it five cents off the rate?
Uh, the rate for Edgewood on a five-year payback is eleven cents.
Okay, so you can, you can reduce the, the water rate by eleven cents until the, until you make an adjustment, uh, over the, over the time. The other thing we have to consider is we have two hundred thousand dollars in retained earnings, it's our policy to have a half a million in that retained earnings for water, for water, and we're down by three hundred thousand. So, we're not managing, managing this very well, and to start playing games with financing. If we're gonna start to extend bonds, and I'm not, that's not a knock, but if we start to extend bonds, all you're gonna do is increase the cost over the long term to the, to the taxpayer. And I think the thing to do is, you take the project that, that takes eleven cents off the table, and I'm saying this with it, it's my street. And I see the repairs that they're making on that street. If they go two more years, we have a whole new water line anyway, but, um, I'm saying it with, being my street, that you defer that project. Because if you wanna minimize, if you wanna minimize it, I think you go ahead with the rate that's recommended. Because that's what it's gonna take to operate the system, and I think the board needs to stand up and tell the residents, this is what it is. If it's thirty four cent increase from the city of Springfield, I have a bigger concern about our agreement with the city of Springfield. I know it's not agreement because it's their water. Um, but I would like to, you know, I, I'd like to have a conversation with, um, with Mike, if, you know, how does this work? Do they give us a five-year notice, or they just say, hey, we're gonna make improvements, here you go? Because if they do, looking back, obviously, we should, we should have looked at this and said, hey, this is the stuff coming down the road.
They, they have had that conversation, I'm sorry.
No, it's, I just, I just think that, I, I, I'm saying that the rate that we have in front of us is the rate to operate the water and sewer department, to deliver water to the citizens. If you start playing with it, all you're doing is an accountant shuffle. Okay, and the pain's gonna be there, you're not, all you're doing is deferring pain, and next year, when there's three water projects that need to be done, then we're gonna, then we're gonna get hit again, and you're gonna have, and we're gonna be back here again saying, how do you minimize it? You can't minimize it, it is what it is.
Okay, so is there a motion to extend the bond?
No, I think we have.
I don't think we're there yet.
I, I think we have more time to discuss it.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, the, the, the city of Springfield did give a five-year estimate. And FY sixteen is less pretty than fifty. Um, the increase is, uh, you know, twel-, uh, it's, it's, I think it was sixteen percent from fourteen to fifteen. It's, it's close to, you know, twenty percent going and looking at sixteen. To do the bond, if you wanted to elongate it to, you know, ten years, you're talking about five cents, maybe? You know, to, to postpone it, we could push it into, like I said, we could push it into sixteen by not doing the project until the spring of two thousand and fifteen. Um, you know, that's a possibility, but again, when you look at the estimates from sixteen from the city of Springfield, they go from seven, you know, the overall cost that, that they're allocating across the board, uh, to its, to its customers, Long Metal being one of them, is going from seventeen million seven to twenty one million nine.
And I'm not saying to postpone the project, I'm saying that's one option. I, I would prefer that, if that's what it's gonna cost to run the system, that's what we gotta tell people it costs to run the system.
Mike had also done the water and sewer rates comparison to other communities, I don't know if that made an impact.
It was in our bracket.
I mean, so, you know, uh, we're not, we're, we're closer to the bottom than we are to the top.
Yeah, you know, the thing I'll say. Yeah, I mean, you can't go buy water from the next town lower as an individual customer, but I think as water and sewer commissioners, um, the board has kept rates low, but, um, and so really has Springfield, but they, like, we are having a conversation about their capital investment and the need to make major upgrades, hence the escalating rates we see in our near future. And I think to Paul's point earlier about setting a rate, making the rate known when consumption is going to occur, you, you never catch up. And that's why setting the rate when we start paying the rate is, is an alternative the board may wanna consider. So, utilities have the revenue coming in that they're paying out on the water and sewer. And, uh, and I don't know if it, Howard, I don't know, Paul, if you know where it's done, I know the community I came from, we set the rate at the beginning of the year, and it was, people knew going into the year what they were gonna be.
I think the other thing we can do is quarterly billing.
Yeah.
And increases cash flow and lets us make adjustments based on either the consumption. And that gets to the point where if we say we wanna set a summer rate, that you know the consumption's gonna go up, that you wanna set a rate specifically for summer to increase conservation or whatever, or capture that water usage.
We do have an offset for, and I don't know what the, the unit of measure is, but we do have an offset for sewer charges that does allow, right, for some, so you're not.
It's a cap, it's a cap on sewer usage based on.
It's a cap on, right, so if you, if your water, if your water, because sewer obviously is tied to the water. If your water hits a certain, the sewer's capped, and so if you're watering your lawn excessively, you're, you're not paying sewer on all, on all of that.
It's very high, though.
It's high, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's highs.
I mean, and, you know, two years ago, we went all the way through having Mike Grable and Yemlip propose to us a, a plan that would allow residents to put in a separate irrigation meter. And we could relook at that, too. I mean, there's a lot of things that we might do as water and sewer commissioners, but the point is that, I, Marie, if I, if I can speak, continue. I, I, I'd like to see if we can come up with a, a couple of scenarios to ask Paul to come back to us and say, what are the effects of, you know, ten-year payback or, uh, a tiered rate, or Paul saying, what's, what's the cost of quarterly billing versus the impact on cash flow for us on, on, on quarterly billing? Uh, you know, because I think there are a couple of options that we've heard here that may be worth having us look.
But if a tiered rate is not, if, if a tiered rate is something that, I mean, that's like a, uh, an in-depth study of things, and I'd, I'd really like the board to vote on that, because it sounds like there's not consensus on that issue.
Right, and, and the tiered rate, your bottom line amount that has to be raised through rates is gonna be the same. It's, that's a distribution, it, it, policy issue more than a, a revenue issue.
I'd like to see anything in regards to a directive to be, uh, a motion on the floor. So if you have a series of things that you would like him to look at, if you could put it in the form of a motion, and then we can get consensus of the board. And the same thing, Alex, if you wanted to make a motion in regards to the tier rate, that way we can, um, know what we're looking for at our next meeting.
So, I, I guess I would make a motion, uh, to have the town manager and the CFO prepare information for our consideration about tiered water rates. And, uh, the reason why I think that's wise is because it, it's, uh, useful to encourage conservation. I think that we ought to make a value judgment on, uh, the usefulness of water for lawns versus water that we're drinking and bathing in. And, uh, I think it would be premature to reject tiered rates without even looking at the information. And I think to sort of close our eyes to that possibility, especially in a uh, environment where we're having a significant increase to our rates, I, I don't, I don't think it's doing the town, uh, the best service. So I, I would make a motion to at least have that information available to us when we're voting on tiered rates.
Is there a second? Okay, is there another motion on the floor?
Marie?
Mm-hmm.
I, I just wanna say, when you, when, Alex, you said the word premature about tiered rates. I actually think it's a supposition that we're over-consuming. And I think when you drive through Long Metal versus some other towns, when you talk about quality of life, we talk about all these other things, a new school building, new senior center, new parks, and, you know, things like that. There's also quality of life when you walk, drive by and you see the green lawns, and, and, and that's a difference in this community. And I, and I think that, what, I think sometimes the board has to stand up and say, this is the cost to deliver water to you folks. I would, I would make a motion that, um, we, we take a look at quarterly billing. We have proposals in front of us from Mr. Pasterzik, and that the only, uh, uh, proposal I would make is to look at quarterly billing and the impacts a cash flow would make in, um, uh, to the town.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Uh, discussion.
Just wanna say, with interest rates so low, that the impact at this point in time with the rates so low, it's not going to have a significant impact, I mean, we'll, we can certainly look at it. The, uh, what I will say, we'll give you the opportunity, if you want to adjust rates, you know, within the year, it'll give you a little more opportunity, should you wanna do that.
And I think that's more important, quite frankly, than ca-, at this point in time, cash flow, just to be able to react to something that happens. You know, if we have a major water issue and that two hundred thousand starts to get dried up, and we wait for another year to go by to shore up that fund, we're in trouble.
Any other discussion on the idea of quarterly rates?
Yeah, I, I think that it, it's, the potential for improving cash flow, uh, Paul, even though interest rates are low, may to some degree compensate for the fact that we're bringing in money at a lower number or lower cost per cubic, fo-, cube, hundred cubic feet than we're being billed from Springfield. So, I think the, the concern is, right now, September, the way I understand what you said, in September, the money we will get in will be based on the old rate, okay? But, you know, we'll be charging immediately, beginning August first, at this new Springfield rate.
What does that have to do with the quarterly billing?
And so quarterly billing will allow us to bring in that money, and, and if we're gonna bill in Sep-, in September, we can bill again in, in December, I guess. That's quarterly billing, right?
Right, I, I mean, one other big advantage of, of billing it on a quarterly basis, again, when it's consumed, the rate's gonna be the rate. Whether we get to bill three months or six months, it's still gonna be the same rate. But, you know, it might be easier from a budget standpoint for the consumer to pay that lower bill as opposed to the higher bill that they receive, right, when they get their credit cards after the holidays and everything like that.
So politically, it's.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Well, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of it to do the favor, because I, I think as a general matter, we should have information about all alternatives on the table. I think it was unfortunate that, uh, the rest of the board did not see fit to even want the information about tiered rates. To me, that's closing your eyes to something that could be valuable. I don't know whether quarterly, uh, billing is good or not, but I wanna see the facts behind it. And, uh, I, I'm open to looking at all alternatives.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, didn't we say, though, that you had a legal opinion that we could not, could not do tiered?
No, he's misunderstanding that, but.
There was a misunderstanding.
No, the, the, the only ruling we have is, we must bill by consumption.
By consumption.
Not must, shall. Which is the legal, the shall.
Must and shall are the same thing.
Okay, by consumption, that's all it says, you know, whether or not that apply, I'm not sure whether or not that applies to tiered, tiered rates or not. I just know that, that tiered rates didn't go over well at all the last time they were tried. They were implemented either as a, uh, effort for conservation, or as an effort for raising funds, or as an effort for whatever they were done for. I was here during the firestorm, and, and I don't wanna be on this side of the table.
Well, that, that type of rate system, if you're at the bottom user, you're gonna pay more for your water.
And Richard, we have a study, it was done.
Right now, the, the motion on the floor is in regards to the quarterly, we, if you wanna put that motion back on.
Question about what he said.
So, is there any other discussion on the quarterlys?
I just have one, one thing, that the study is out there, we have it in town hands somewhere, there, the study that was done, and it was done by an outside group, it wasn't done by the.
This is a Larry Starr?
No, 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 no.
Excuse me, study on what?
On the tiered rates, I'm sorry. So if you really wanna know the effect of them, we already have the information. Nothing's changed, and, and other than the fact that the water is now more expensive and per unit than it was eight years. It was my first year on the board, and that study came out, and it was punitive to be, um, what was the word? For conservation purposes, that's all it was.
How many years ago was it, Paul?
Eight years ago.
Who put it out?
I, I, I have a, I believe I have a copy, I don't know if I have a PDF, but I could certainly ma-, make one, it was done by Earth Tech.
Okay. Should we send that?
It was done by an outside consultant to look at it.
Are we still on the motion for quarterly billing?
Okay, all those in favor of getting the information on quarterly billing?
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, it passes. Any other requests for a directive to look into in regards to water rates?
I'd really like to see what the effect are, is of stretching out the, the bonds. I understand, Paul, that you only get, you only get that one year, because next year, you're gonna have another bond on top of it.
I just have a question for Mr. Santimello's motion. Um, I have a motion to look at quarterly billing, the impacts of cash flow, is that correct?
Yeah.
Information, we have, we have an adopted.
Request for information, yeah.
For, uh, for a motion.
Second.
And I seconded it.
No, 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 I mean, make your motion, I'll say.
My, my motion is to, to look at the effect of, of, of stretching out the, the bonds, recognizing it's a, it's a one-year issue.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor?
No, no, he had a, Richard, did you ever?
You had a discussion?
No, I, no, we don't, we don't have discussion.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Any other directive, motion for a directive?
The use of reserves. Yes, I talked about the use of sewer reserves or that, for the overall combined.
Personally, I'm not interested in doing that, Paul, but maybe somebody else may be.
I just, it was thrown out before. I just want to make sure if there was an interest that we had in taking care of.
Now, did anyone want to put down the motion again for tiered rates? No?
Well, I mean, I would make it again.
No, because the discussion seemed to bleed out, and I didn't know if there was.
So I'll make the motion again.
Is there a second?
For, to get information on tiered rates, so that we can have that as an alternative.
Alex, can, I, I just like, what information do you want to get?
No, well, see, here's, we had this.
No, I'm not being facetious.
No, no, and, and I want to respond. The problem last year, I don't know if you remember this.
No, I do.
We had a problem coming to consensus on rates. I was interested in tiered rates, and what everybody said in response, we can't support tiered rates because we don't, like, what's the number? Like, what would those numbers be? Because you have to have a set of, of rates that are going to.
Do you want a recommendation from the, from our town accountant on what the rates should be?
Or, or, well, I mean.
You know, if you use less than fifty, one, fifty, 100 cubic feet, you should be paying this, and between 50 and 100, is that what you're looking for?
Exactly. So that we, when we vote on water rates, we can have that as an option.
But, and, but what it's going to tell you is, A, because, and, and this is the reason I'm voting against it, maybe because I know too much, because I did the model. But, but we need to raise $2,360,000, okay? In the end, we're going to raise $2,360,000. What it's going to tell you is, you know, in each tier, how many people come, fall into that tier, and how much you raise from that tier.
Exactly. It's a mathematical exercise. Right. And so my point is that I want, if I make a motion for tiered rates, I have to, it's got to be specific. Because otherwise, we don't have something that's going to actually raise the revenue.
And therein lies my problem, because I think we, you know, unless you've gone through it, and you sit there with the model in front of you, and I did that for a year and a half, okay? What you're going to get is a set of tiers, because you can't get, because what we're going to say is, well, it's fifty, up to 50 units. And then we're going to say 50 to, but somebody's, well, what happens if we went to 60 units? And, and you can't do that statically. So you're going to get one set, and I guarantee you, people are going to want to look at the options on that set, and you can't do that short of having a model in front of you, taking it over a long period of time. And so what you're asking for is, give me one set of tiers that you think works, but if, in fact, we decide it doesn't work, you're just going to recycle the whole thing over again, because there is no, short of having the, the spreadsheet, which I know they have, because I've gotten this. Now, how many people, you know, we've got 50, 100 or something water customers, and we know exactly how much water each one of those uses. And you put it on a spreadsheet, and you sort it out, and then you, you artificially grab tiers. But the question is, what tiers are we going to direct them to grab?
Maybe there should be an offline discussion. We can bring this up at the next meeting again, where you can talk to them about variables.
I'm recommending, Alex, that, you know, you take, because it's not necessarily clear-cut, where the cut, you know, 50 is an arbitrary number. And you might say 60, and you might say 62, and, and what happens is, and where the people who come in here is the people, I use 51 units, and I'm getting hammered for one unit of water that I can't do anything about, and it was a total arbitrary breakpoint.
Alex, you should look and see what other towns are doing in the way of tiered rates, and maybe we'll know which, more specifically, you're going to want to break for.
No, actually, I mean, here's the thing. Mark is right. You could have an infinite number of, of different tiers. That's not the point. I mean, what, what, what I'm, and I don't want to make the perfect the enemy of the good. To me, having the concept of tiered rates is more important than whether ought to, the cutoff ought to be 50 or 51. That, that's not really, you know.
I can send you the spreadsheet. I can send you the model.
I understand. And if, I mean, I, I, you know, to me, it seems like you can put this into a computer program and run the numbers pretty quickly.
I did.
Right, yeah. So, and that's all, that's all I'm proposing, is that we have that set of numbers as a viable alternative, if we decide as a matter of policy that we want to do it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
Please. I wasn't here eight years ago, or however long ago it was, but he was. And there is a study that was done, and I am aware of it, although it may even be a copy of it in the office. Perhaps, and this is something we can do offline, Alex, is we can look to see what was done the last time, why it didn't work, and what variables have changed since then, and that, to me, seems to be what you want to get at.
Well, it's, see, here's the thing. I, I, I was around when this happened, and when it, quote-unquote, didn't work, there was a small number of people who used an extremely large amount of water who complained very loudly. That's what didn't work. It wasn't a technical failure. It wasn't a failure of finances or anything like that. It was a political decision, which, which the board was, you know, within its purview to make. I happen to think it was the wrong decision, and I'd like to revisit that decision. And all I'm asking for is the information to allow us to make that decision.
And so that's your motion?
Won't the study do that, though?
No, all, but we need, but the point is, the, the study will tell us, yes, these are sort of, this is generally what would happen, but we need something that's up to date to tell us how we can raise the revenue we need for FY15 using tiered rates.
We need to move this along to a motion, because we've had the attorney waiting for one hour to break into executive session.
He is out there. He's laughing at us, but, but, he's not laughing at us. He's crying. Alex, you're, you're partly right. It was a political decision. And actually, it was the right decision, because the, the report was skewed, because it's, it made a supposition that you're making, that we were, we want to force people to conserve. And that's, that's all that, that tier rate will do. It's going to force people to conserve. So that decision isn't to say what's fair and equitable, it's to force people to conserve. And you're, you're, the part that you're not right about is it affected, it wasn't a small group of people who used a lot of water. That was one part of it. It was also the small, the, the people that used small amounts of water that saw their bill shot up, shoot up. And they were the ones that were coming in to complain, and when we saw the numbers, they, they used averages in that report. And averages are great until you actually start to look at how many people it affected, so it wasn't just the top people. And, and the reason I can tell you this is I was at the table when we voted on it. And you want the numbers, the numbers in the study, nothing's changed on tiered rates. The only thing that's changed is the cost of the water today.
Is there a motion?
I mean.
You did. Is there a second? No?
There's a motion.
It was to, to ask for information about tiered rates.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of getting information on tiered rates? Okay, it doesn't pass. All right, let's, can, I have a motion to, a break into executive session to reopen into open session for negotiations.
Make a motion to adjourn into executive session, to resume it to open session for the purposes of collective bargaining.
Second.
To open, you said to go.
To resume back into open session.
Okay, we need a roll call.
Did you get it right? Richard?
Yes.
Marie Angelides?
Yes.
Richard Foster?
Yes.
Paul Santino?
Yes.
Markel?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.